Good evening, welcome to our Tuesday, April fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, Exeter Township School District Committee of a Whole Meeting. Mr. Feig, can you please take your call?
Dr. Ann Herring.
Here.
John Fiddler.
Here.
Dr. Andrea Battler.
Here.
Dr. David Hemberger.
Here.
Jason Mel.
Here.
Timothy Morgan.
Here.
Robert Quinter.
Here.
Julia Schaefer.
Here.
Allison Wilson. Absent. Uh, one thing to note, uh, Mr. Quinter took his oath to office last Wednesday and was notarized and handed that in. Eight present, one absent.
Thank you, Mr. Feig, and welcome back to the board, Mr. Quinter. In addition to the eight board members in attendance this evening, we're also joined at the board table by our solicitor Sharon Montaigne, and members of the school district administration, including Dr. Cindy Rozeski, substitute superintendent, Mrs. Dawn Harris, Director of People's Services, Dr. Christie Haller, Director of Human Resources, and Mr. Brian Feig, who serves as our business administrator as well as Board Secretary. The meeting minutes are attached. Does anybody have any changes or discussion they would like to make regarding meeting minutes for the Board Committee of a Whole Meeting, March first, Board Voting Meeting, March fifteenth, or Board Special Voting Meeting, March twenty-ninth? No? Okay, thank you. We'll move forward with our first presentation. Mr. Endy.
Good evening. My name is Logan Endy. I'm a senior at a school and a life scout with Troop Three Seventy-Seven in Stony Creek Mills. I'm working towards the rank of people scout. And for my service project, I'm organizing a blood drive with Miller Keese and Blood Center. Due to the COVID pandemic, the Blood Center has to cancel many appointments, and now the blood supply is, in our area, is extremely low. Did you know that every two seconds, someone requires a blood transfusion? Or on an annual basis, the Blood Center needs to collect over one hundred thousand units of blood to help save patients in early problems, Redding Hospital, and Penney. That equates to four hundred fifty donors every day. Donating blood is safe. It only takes forty-five minutes to one hour, and your donation can be used to help premature infants, accident victims, and cancer patients. I chose this project because my cousin was recently in coma. She didn't have feeling and couldn't move her arms and fingers. The doctors thought she might have had a stroke and maybe played with it. This therapy sometimes can come from donor's claims. Without donors, this therapy may not be available to the community. It's scary to think that someone I love may not have access to life-saving therapy. When you give a pint, you give the gift of life. You give someone a second chance, and you give back to the community. If you're able, if you are able or know someone who donates blood, please join me during my stop, which is scheduled for April twenty-fifth through the thirtieth at Miller Keese and Blood Center in Redding, off of Route One Eighty. My goal is to schedule fifty donors and collect forty units. One unit can help, can help three people. You can schedule your appointment online or by phone, and please give them my name and my group code, eight-eight-six-eight. Thank you for the opportunity to share.
Thank you.
I also have flyers to give out.
Wonderful. Thank you, Logan. Good job. I've scheduled mine. I'll have that information if anybody needs it as well.
Logan. I just, uh, you can go. I just want to say congratulations, uh, you know. I know the amount of work that goes into your scouting career and how much work it takes to plan an Eagle project. And, uh, just want to say congratulations. I think this is a really great thing. We'll certainly be pushing out to the community, and, uh, best of luck in your board review in the future.
Okay. Next presentation is the two thousand and twenty-one audit presentation by Chris Her.
Evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. Happy to be here. My name is Chris Her. I'm a partner with Mailie. Uh, we were the independent auditors for the June thirty, two thousand and twenty-one financials. I'm really happy to be able to be here, go through this with you. I'm just gonna point out a few things about our process, a few financial highlights. You'll be interrupting me at any time, but it's clear. So we did start the audit back in, uh, September. We come in with a pretty lengthy, uh, request list of everything from bank statements and reconciliations to reconciliations for receivables and payables, all the way down to every individual's W two, uh, all of which is, is part of our audit testing. Uh, we also review internal controls, policies, and procedures over, you know, how you report and cash receipts, cash dispersion. How are you reconciling your bank accounts? How is payroll being processed? So we do look at all those things. Didn't have any, any issues from the way things are running in the business office. Everything there seemed, uh, to be running well. Uh, when we get into the actual numbers, uh, we tie out a great deal of balance sheet. Cash investments tied out to, uh, reports from financial institutions. Uh, receivables, payables, uh, much of that, we test what happened subsequent to year end on those. Did you receive the money? Does it receive one? Did you pay the money? Does it pay one? Debt, we confirm a lot of debt. Capital assets, we get detailed schedules for that. We test all the additions. We also test depreciation that was taken from the year. Revenues and expenses, we confirm a great deal of, of the revenues of the school district. Taxes, uh, are confirmed. Grant revenues are confirmed with the state, whether those flow through P D E. Uh, on the expense side, uh, we actually do a lot of data extraction and analysis and testing. What that means is we get the general ledger detail from the business office. That is a scheduled every individual transaction that ran through the books for the year. We run that through software, and that allows us to sort of, uh, fiddle with it, analyze it in a bunch of different ways. Um, we'll look at activity month to month, look for any unusual spikes in activity, any unusual, uh, drops in activity, and we'll AMR testing there. Uh, we'll compare this year's activity to last year's activity, uh, because we have last year's activity in the software as well from the last audit. A couple of years ago, we started doing predictive analytics. We'll take four or five years of activity, uh, in expenses, and we'll look at the trends, and we'll come up with what we think will happen this year before we can even get your notes. And we'll compare your actual results of what we thought was gonna happen. And again, if there's an expense account that's really, um, technical or out of whack with that, um, you know, that's what we will, uh, do to AMR testing. So at the end of the day, it's a very risk-based approach. It's not just looking at the same expense accounts every year or the same vendors every year. Really analyze a hundred percent of the data and then just kind of see where it takes us. And at the end of that, we have a financial statement, um, which is what we issued in February. I don't want to go through every page. Um, I don't even know that you need to follow along. I'll rattle off a couple of page numbers when I, as I get. But, um, one of the first things I always like to touch on is our opinion on financial statements, which is on page three. Uh, this is an unmodified opinion. Also, there is a clean opinion. This is the, the best opinion you can have on the financials, and what it means is that, in our opinion, these statements are free of any material misstatement. Uh, they're in compliance with GAAP, that's generally accepted accounting principles. They comply with all GASBU pronouncements. That's the Governmental Accounting Standards Board that, um, you know, creates a lot of footnotes in the way we record, uh, certain balances in the financial statement. Um, no scope limitations. Everything that we needed as part of the audit, we received in order to conduct our audit. There is one thing in the opinion that we added called an emphasis of matter. It's exactly what it sounds like. It's not good, it's not bad, it's just our ability to, uh, emphasize a matter to a reader. This year, we did implement a new GASB standard, GASB Stand Data Number Eighty-four, fiduciary activities. And really, all that did was, um, student activities that are presented in the fiduciary fund. Um, they used to just be presented as an asset offsetting liability. The theory there in the past was the money's in your statements, but it's not really your money. It belongs to the students. It's an asset, but it's not really your money, so it reflects as an offsetting liability. We owe that back to the students. Um, I'm usually a GASB apologist, but I didn't understand this one. They changed the presentation, so now those funds are presented the same way as any other funds. There's the assets, there's the fund balance, and then we now show revenue and expense related to those activities. A change, a pretty small change, but it was a change. Just want to make sure the viewers were aware of that. Um, page twenty is the balance sheet for the governmental funds. Um, I just wanted to focus on the general fund results for a minute for the year. Uh, one thing I always get asked about, um, when I'm doing these is financial health. Are we healthy? How do we, how do we look? Um, the metric I use for that is always fund balance. Fund balance is the difference between your assets and the liability. So if you were to take your assets, extinguish all your liabilities, what's, what would be left over? At the end of June thirty, two thousand and twenty-one, total fund balance for the general fund was sixteen point six million. Um, that is down from about eighteen point five million the year before. So fund balance did decrease by about one point nine million dollars. There's five categories of fund balance. Um, there's non-spendable, which is just an offset to prepaid expenses, um, up in the assets. Um, there's committed fund balance. These are fund balances that are, fund balances that are essentially earmarked, um, for specific purposes. Uh, in this case, um, I believe pensions and, uh, future capital improvements, I believe. Uh, there's assigned fund balance, which is very much the same thing. Funds that are earmarked for future needs. Uh, there was nine million dollars assigned for our future budgetary shortfalls. And then there's unassigned fund balance, which is exactly what it sounds like. It's fund balance that is not earmarked, designated for any specific purpose. Uh, at the end of the year, that was five point two million dollars. Uh, that's where most of the decrease from last year to this year, uh, landed. It was in the unassigned bucket. Uh, that five point two million dollars is about six point seven percent of your expenses at the general fund, um, which is pretty stable. Uh, P D E, um, usually wants to see that number, but below eight percent. Eight percent is their threshold. Six point seven percent is where you're at, so you're below that threshold. Um, that's not a lot of unassigned fund balance. If you think about that in terms of operations, um, even if you were at eight percent, that's less than one month of expenses. Um, usually, when I'm, I'm talking to non-school districts, we're talking about having reserves ready for two or three months. Um, six point seven is roughly twenty days, maybe? Um, when I look at total fund balance in the general fund, that total sixteen point six million compared to expenses, it's about twenty percent. Um, and, and before this meeting this afternoon, I went and I looked at about ten, twelve other school districts that we do just to try to get, um, a feel of comparison-wise, how you guys would fall. Pretty average. Um, some of the school districts I looked at, uh, twenty percent, twenty percent, thirteen percent, fourteen percent, twenty-six percent, twelve, fourteen, and again, you're around twenty. Now, some of those school districts where the fund balance was, um, lower, those schools also, when I got into a little more detail, are schools where they move a significant amount of fund balance over to capital reserve, capital project funds, so it's out of the general fund. Um, and what I mean, out of, moving funds out, it's like twenty, thirty million dollars sometimes of money that's been moved out of the general fund over the years to put aside for capital projects. You don't have that here. Had done something like that here, total fund balance would start to fall in the general fund closer to some of these other lower ratios. But, uh, I think big picture, twenty percent is, is pretty average, pretty typical, um, spot for, for a school district to be in. Page twenty-two is the revenue and expense statement for the general fund. I just wanted to point out a couple of things I saw from year to year. Uh, local sources, which is largely tax revenues, uh, it's fifty-two point five million dollars of revenues this year. It's up about eight hundred thousand dollars from the year before. Um, so not a large increase, but there is an increase there. Uh, about one point two million dollars of increase from real estate taxes driven by, uh, a mileage increase. E I T was up about two hundred thousand. So you have about one point four million up, but what offset that was, uh, investment earnings. Um, there, there are no investment earnings anymore. I mean, the banks, interest rates have dropped to almost nothing. Uh, the year before, you had over, uh, close to six hundred thousand of investment earnings, uh, pre-pandemic. We'll say it that way. Um, it's down to forty thousand dollars. So you've lost about, you know, slightly over half a million dollars of income every year on your investments. Federal source, state sources, pretty flat year-on-year, around twenty-one, you know, million each year. Uh, federal sources, that's up about one point three million dollars. The reason for that is all the new COVID money that started to come into the school districts. Uh, so federal sources was up about one point three million dollars. It actually pretty much perfectly offset the increase in instruction expenses, which was also about one point three million, which is what we would expect as you get more federal money for specific purposes. You incur expenses for those specific purposes.
Hey, Chris.
Yes.
Can you elaborate a little bit on investment earnings, uh, with regard to Act Seventy-two? What we can invest in and what we can't?
It's limited. It is very limited. Um, I believe we have a footnote on that. Um, let's see if I can find it real fast. Essentially, it did open up a little bit, um, what you can invest in, but, but really, anything that's high risk is still pretty much all for tea. Uh, you're, you're not gonna be able to invest in, in stocks or, or anything like that. Um, I know there's a description of exactly what you can and can't go into. I'm not putting my finger on it out here. State statutes authorize the district to invest in obligations, participations, and other instruments of federal agencies. So, um, certain, certain bond, um, instruments, uh, U.S. Treasury instruments can be done. Uh, number two, U.S. Treasury bills, CDs are allowed. Um, some commercial paper, uh, savings, demand deposits, that's, again, all very low-risk items. So, uh, no investments in Amazon or Apple or Facebook or any of that type of stuff. Um, and then, of course, uh, Act Seventy-two, uh, all your cash investments in the banks, uh, while they're not covered by FDIC, uh, coverage, uh, all the banks are required to keep collateralization. So your, your funds in the banks that exceed FDIC coverage, two hundred fifty thousand dollars each, they are still collateralized with all banks. Does that kind of cover what you're looking for, Brian?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Um, back to the general fund expenses real quick. Um, so revenues in total were up about two point two million dollars. The expenses, um, they were up about nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, like I said, the instruction was up, uh, about one point three million because of that COVID money spending. Debt service was actually down about seven hundred thousand dollars, uh, and that really resulted from some refundings that had been done over the past couple of years, uh, as well as some bonds, uh, some debt just being paid off. And at the bottom line, um, the general fund, uh, net change in fund balance, general fund lost just shy of two million dollars uh, for the year ended June thirty, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, quick word on long-term debt. Um, you know, one of the biggest components of debt that I always like to bring up is the net pension liability. That is your share of the pieceers pie. Um, I, I, when, I should look it up again. Last time I looked at it, it was a forty billion or fifty billion dollar unfunded. Um, and that gets allocated to all of the school district entities in the state. Your liability last year, um, your share of that liability was a hundred and six million dollars. That did increase this year to a hundred and ten. Um, I would remind you that it's a one-year look back. So even though this is a June thirty, twenty-one financial statement, we are talking about a pension share calculated as of June thirty, two thousand and twenty, which is significant since that's three months into the pandemic, when everything sort of started to drop off before everybody could come up. Um, I am expecting when we are having this conversation next year for June thirty, twenty-two, that we'll see that liability start to decrease as the assets have, have recovered most of that amount. There also was two new bond issues during the year. Um, there was a Series A of two thousand and twenty. Uh, eighteen million dollars was, uh, taken out to, uh, refund the two thousand and twelve A issue. Uh, that result, that refunding resulted in cash flow savings to the school district, uh, just over one point seven million dollars, uh, due to the much more favorable, uh, interest rates. There was also a Series B of two thousand and twenty, uh, two point seven million dollar bond, and that was for, uh, the money. The last thing I wanted to touch on is we do do a, um, award specific, uh, or audit specific to federal awards, uh, also known as a single audit, sometimes called a yellow book audit. This is, um, our audit of the federal monies that the school district has received. Um, this is back on page seventy-five or seventy-six is where the, the main scheduled grant starts. Uh, you did have about four million dollars of federal money come into the district for June thirty, twenty-one. That is a little more than double what you had the year before. Again, that's driven by, uh, new money coming into the district from COVID. Um, you had about s- one million dollars in education stabilization. That was a new federal grant directly related to COVID. Uh, you also had three hundred thousand in coronavirus relief funds. And again, that was another new grant providing, um, COVID nineteen relief funds. Your nutrition cluster, which is the, uh, the, the breakfast and lunch programs of the school district, that also increased seven hundred thousand dollars. And that was because the federal government really opened that up, and no kids had to pay. Uh, it really reined the goose for, for everybody. Uh, so along with that came more reimbursement subsidies. We did audit the nutrition cluster this year, um, reviewing the spending, um, the reports, the reimbursement requests for that. Uh, we also audited the education stabilization. Um, so out of the four million dollars of grants, we, we did audit about, um, roughly two point five, three million dollars of that funding. Uh, again, no findings, no issues there. You know, all the results of our audit was all the money's being spent the right way, and this one, they're being managed the way they should be managed. We also issued a, what's called a SARS Point Fourteen letter. I don't know if you guys have that or not. Um, it's a little five, six-page letter. It's cookie cutter. We have to issue this for every one of our audits. It just covers our responsibility, which was, uh, to perform an audit for the school district. Um, you know, states, there's no disagreements, you know, changes in accounting policies. Uh, the very last page of that is any audit adjustments that we had during the audit, and I wanted to point this out because it is a very small number of audit adjustments. It is, um, I forget if it's five or six. Five audit adjustments, and these are all P and L neutral. These are all revenue and expense neutral. Every one of these was related to debt and was really just grossing up revenues and expenses for, for leases, the new bond issues and things like that. So, um, it wasn't, it wasn't anything that was really an error. It was really more of a presentation change that needed to be made under the GAZB. And what that tells me is that you guys, on a monthly basis, are getting pretty good, pretty accurate, um, reports from the business office. I, I wish every client of mine only had five adjustments. My life would be so much easier, but this was a very, very clean audit, so I wanted to make that point clear. With that, I, you know, I think that's all I had. I'd be happy to field any questions if there are any.
Mr. Her, I just have one question. I kind of actually just want to get your opinion on it. Um, our debt service, uh, we, uh, based on the, uh, debt service that we have issued, would have everything fully paid off by two thousand and twenty-nine. Is that atypical that you see in school districts having, um, s- all of their debt pretty much, at least currently not spaced out longer in terms of years?
Yeah, it, it really, it varies a lot from, from district to district. I think I have one district that has my debt.
Oh, yeah?
One. Um, they're gonna build a new high school very soon. That's a change. Um, you know, i- i- it's a pretty short window. Um, you know, we're talking two thousand and twenty-nine, so, um, seven, eight years. That's pretty short. Um, but I do have a number of school districts that have very recently, you know, built new elementary schools, built high schools, those sort of things. If all of a sudden you're building some buildings, that, that's gonna shoot you way out. So really, I, I think you gotta look at, you know, what is the state of the infrastructure, uh, compared to the debt? Um, you know, if you haven't done any, or had, haven't had the need to do any new buildings lately, um, I'd say that's pretty reasonable. Um, I don't know if that's something that's been planned on, uh, you know, that can change really quickly. Uh, you know, going from seven or eight years, all of a sudden, you're in twenty, twenty-five years, you're building a big project. Um, it's probably a little bit on the low end, on average. I think most of my districts are probably in their early thirties, but I don't think it's terribly small enough. I, I'd say, I don't know that I work with any schools that are in the forty, like twenty forty or after that. So I think most of them are in the twenty thirties, and then you're twenty twenty-nine, so I don't think that's at all.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it, uh, we, we would have once, out of the five series that we have issued, we have one that would be paid off in two thousand and twenty-six, another paid off in two thousand and twenty-seven, and another in two thousand and twenty-eight, and the final two are paid off in two thousand and twenty-nine. So, yeah, I just wanted to get your opinion. It seems like we're in a pretty good place in terms of debt service and, and, yeah, being, being able to pay that off.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr., I just had a kind of follow-up question to that same, um, on that same theme. I seem to recall something about maintaining debt as, as a, a certain amount of debt, as being useful for maintaining a positive, uh, bond rating. Is there any, is there any correlation between that, or is that just something that I've, uh, a misunderstanding that I have? Does there have any connection between the two?
I haven't heard of one. You know, when I, when I, when I hear about the bond agencies and what they're looking at, um, my impression has always been they're more focused on fund balance, um, fund balance trends and that, you know, net income, revenue, expense trends over a number of years. I've never heard of a rating being affected because, um, there's no debt, minimal debt. Um, if anything, I would think if there's excessive debt and, you know, not a performance to back it up, I don't think that might affect your rate, rating more than anything. But I'm not a rating agency. Um, I don't get into all that minutia. Um, I've never heard of that. Sure.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Her, for coming out tonight. Appreciate it.
Well, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. We will not be amending the agenda tonight, so we'll move on to committees, starting with the Education Committee. Mr. Fiddler.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Um, I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Battler, who has been eager to get more involved. I'm very happy to see that. She's the other member of our committee. So, Dr. Battler, I will, uh, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Fiddler. Okay. First A, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following field trips beyond a sixty-mile radius. And do you require me to read all of these, or would you prefer me not to?
You don't have to. Um, okay.
Okay. Just mentioning what each thing.
Okay, sorry. The senior high tenth grade students traveling to Hershey Park for their class trip. A trip to Washington DC with the exchange program students from Spain. And the high school students that are traveling to Spain as the second half of the exchange program. It is also recommended that the board of school directors approve the revised twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school calendar as attached. And I think they can bring that up. Thanks, Joe.
The man behind the curtain.
Yeah, the man behind the curtain.
Yes, Joe, if you can pull that up.
And I'm sure there's going to be discussion on that.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Battler. So first of all, as we were looking, I'll explain why we were proposing some changes, but we did go around to a number of groups, asked for feedback. We've gotten some community feedback over the past couple of days, and we appreciate all of that. We appreciate folks that are here or that watching live stream to hear the explanations for all of the items that are on this agenda. The purpose of the committee, the whole, is to hear explanations, is to hear reasons why we have some things happening. So we do appreciate everybody's interest in that and their willingness to listen to our reasoning behind some of these things. So one of the things, you know, that I came in six weeks ago and really wasn't planning on making a whole lot of big changes, but one of the things that I felt necessary to react to was some of the frustrations, a little bit frustrations of staff and administrators of not having a enough professional development opportunities during the second half of the semester, kind of feeling that as we're going through the second half of the semester, as well as some questions around the use of snow days, the use of flexible instruction days, what that looks like and how maybe we can better adjust our calendar to handle those things. And those were things that we were learning as we were going through the school year and kind of adjusting to. When we're working with a school calendar, there's a lot that has to be balanced. Priorities are instructional time. It's very important that we have instructional time as much as possible for our students, that while we have that instructional time, we're making the best of it. It's important for us to have effective use of professional development days, how we use those, how we use that time. There's things called Act eighty that if anybody wants me to explain that, I can explain Act eighty at some point in time. But Act eighty days that can be used and how they should be used. And then, of course, we do want to make sure that we have take of all our families and our communities into consideration. And I'll talk about some of those things and how that went into play. In any case, it's a balancing act and there's, it's never an all win situation. There's a lot of compromise going into the calendar and as we all know, in compromise, nobody wins. So I'm going to go through some of the reasoning that we have for some of the changes. If I stand up and point, is that okay? I don't think they'll be able to hear me on live feed too well, though, but maybe I'll shout a little bit. Yeah, maybe, maybe then I might not be able. Okay, is that good? So let me go through some of the changes. First of all, it's a two page document. Mike, you can't hear? It's on. Okay, if I hold it very closely, oh, like I'm in a tunnel. So what we have, this is the proposal. There's a two page, there's two pages to the calendar. We didn't make the adjustments to the second page yet until we formalize this and then we can go through. Otherwise, things might get mixed up and lost a little bit. So there's a couple of things that we wanted to do. There were three days here of professional development. And those three days of professional development were necessary, especially at the beginning of this school year because we had a big elementary literacy initiative being rolled out. So we wanted to make sure that there was time for that. I'm using we very royally because I was not here, but we wanted to make sure that we were using that and had that time put in upfront. But as we were talking to administrators and staff and those that were planning professional development and as well as our association, we thought that we wanted to move this one, one of these days somewhere else, which we did. We moved it down here to March twentieth in the second half of the year. What happens then, though, is this complete domino effect where now you have to put that day in somewhere else. The way the calendar had been, the only other place would be, well, I shouldn't say the only other place, but one of the choices would be June twelfth, a Monday. We kind of want to stay from going into that next week of school. That doesn't make sense. It takes, it takes away a lot from families having that full week in there as well as some of our programs like our E S Y program and things like that. So we really wanted to avoid that. So what we did was, and I'll show you in a second, but we made the Tuesday and Wednesday in-service days and moved this in-service day down here, thus giving us that time that we were looking for. As far as the in-service time, we also added a couple of half days. Now, I know I heard history that at one point in time we had like a lot of half days and that it doesn't sit well with daycare for families and all of that, families having to try to find that. So we tried to limit it a little bit. We have a half day in December twenty second. We have a half day in December twentieth. These are additional ones. And one in May twenty sixth, end of year. And these are, these are put in, obviously, December twenty second is kicking it off to the winter holiday. January twentieth is at the semester break. And that, there used to be two half days in there years preceding. And what that was for like final exams and wrapping up the semester. So we put a half day in there for end of semester to be able to wrap up the things from the first half, be able to get things organized, make any changes, whatever necessary as we're starting the second half of the year. So that was strategic and intentional, putting it in there. And then an end of year half day, again, for any kind of opportunities that are needed to, as we're wrapping up the end of the school year. So what we did then was we needed to find these extra, extra days that we had taken away and making March twentieth a teacher day and not a student day. So we looked at backing this up, backing up the first day of school from the twenty ninth to the twenty fifth. In looking at other calendars, there's just the ones I looked at, and I can't say I got all of them, but three school districts started the twenty ninth. Most school districts started within this week. So that was kind of helpful, too, when it comes to like our B C T C students, where we have some shared services and we have some shared instructional time. It would be helpful for our students. By doing that, what that enabled us to do was give us the one day for the March twentieth. It also backed up our last day of school from June ninth to June eighth. That's helpful because then that gives us June ninth, which is marked as a flexer day for the teachers, but can then be used for a snow day. So that's how those got moved around. The second half of what we did, and I'm going to do an addendum to this in a second, but the second half of what we did was there was one snow day marked on that previously approved calendar, and I believe it was April tenth, which is the day after Easter, Easter Monday. And then all of the other snow days were going to be tacked on to the end of the year, starting June twelfth. Now, this year, we had a pretty light, pretty light winter. We had an emergency day for lights, heat, something, power outage. That was right, like the week right before I got here, that we had to make that, that day up, too. And so, you know, you're looking at having that April tenth and then going into June twelfth. The other alternative was the use of flexible instruction days, of which we are allowed to use five. Flexible instructional days are, were a great thing to have when we were going through the pandemic. They were useful as we were trying to make sure we were getting our instruction done while we had students and staff that were out, while we had issues with all kinds of isolations and, and folks not being able to be in the same buildings and all of those kinds of things. The state is still allowing for the use of five instructional days. It's my recommendation and the recommendation of a lot of the administrators that we limit the use of the flexible instructional days for school makeup. There's a number of reasons. They're nice to have. They're nice to have in your back pocket. They're nice to have in case you really need them. They're nice to have if, you know, we have some kind of big emergency again. But as far as an equity of instruction and all students getting the instruction that we need, having snow days and makeup days where the students can be with the students, I think almost everybody would agree is the, is the preference that we have for that. So the recommendation here on this proposed calendar is that we put some more snow days in during the week before Easter. So this one uses April third, fourth, fifth, and sixth, and April tenth as makeup. I'm using snow days, but maybe we even change that language to emergency makeup days because of power outages. And so we use that as, as makeup days before looking at flexible instruction days and then before tacking it on to the end of the year. So I have one more thing to say, but before I do that, any questions before I go into my last little piece on that? Or comments? So my last thought is this. I know that we had some feedback about starting here on the twenty fifth. We could, instead of starting the twenty fifth and twenty sixth, we could make those days, make April third and fourth of that week before Easter. We could make those the additional two days. But I wanted to stay away. Hopefully, if we had nice weather, you know, we could have the whole week again. But you'd have April, you could do April third and fourth. So I just want to throw that out as an option around the calendar.
So I think that some of the feedback that I've gotten from the community and that the board's gotten through email is not that necessarily the community is against starting the twenty fifth. It's the simple fact that the calendar was approved two months ago. And once that was approved, it set in the stage, community members booking vacations, prepaying for things. And during, because of the last two years and what they've looked like, it's very difficult for them to book those things. And now as a result, if we start the twenty fifth, decisions are going to have to be made by these parents as to whether your child has to miss the first day of school or whether they have to cancel a potentially non-refundable vacation. So my only thing here with this whole thing is, is that I think if we had made these decisions in January, it would have been a non-issue for the first day of school. But now that we've given those, those families the opportunity to book those vacations, we really need to allow them to, to continue with that and not have to make that difficult choice of starting then and continuing to start on the twenty ninth.
I understand. I wasn't here in January, but, but I completely understand that. And so, you know, leaving, if you leave, if you leave the calendar as is and there is snow, you're going to be, keep going down into June, so it's next summer that gets messed up. But, but you haven't planned for that yet as a family. You haven't planned, you haven't made reservations for that, so.
Yeah, I just add, I agree with Mr. Morgan. I would be perfectly fine going back to the twenty ninth. And Dr. Mrazeski, if your recommendation is putting back two of those days in April, I would be in favor of that.
I'm fine with however, whatever the board wants to go with there. Just some kind of consensus or something as to what to propose. I think Dr. Member, Dr. Hammer.
No, I mean, if you're looking for feedback from board members, I, I would agree with what the guys have said here. That, you know, I, I think it has created some difficulties for some folks who have pre-scheduled. So I think that's a, that's, that's worthy. I also want to just thank you for recognizing the flexible instructional days as being somewhat problematic, not the easy, you know, fix that sometimes people think it is, particularly in terms of how it affects families differently. There's, I, you know, I think there's an equitability issue at play there. And I really do appreciate the fact that, you know, the best instruction is when a student is in school, you know, with their teacher. So if we could sort of deprioritize some of those flexible instruction days, that, that would be my preference as well.
And we can either mark that on the calendar or we just, I know the administrators are all on board with that, too. So I'm sure they'll probably remember it as we're moving forward, too, because that was kind of a big discussion point that we had.
Just a quick comment. I had a comment from a neighbor who actually had a pretty good suggestion. We've, I counted seven emails today. I don't know if anybody counted differently. But she suggested that we do a quick one question survey to see really how many in the community have made plans or if they haven't made plans, how many approve of the change and how many would like to see the original as we approved in January. So it's just a thought. I thought it was worth passing along. It could be, I'm sure Jen Breton could do a one question survey and get it out, give people a week to respond. And then, and then we'd have a better sense of what the community, how the community feels than just the seven people who took the time to write.
And I do agree it's a good idea. I kind of think we'll get more people responding that say they do have plans than people that are saying they don't, only because, just because who's going to respond or those that feel more strongly about it, I think.
Sure, but then we'll have a better, better sense. Instead of seven out of three thousand, we'll have maybe a few hundred out of three thousand.
I'll let, I'll let that up to board.
I just want to say thank you to Dr. Cindy for all the work you put into this because I know it's a lot of work. I appreciate that. And in hearing from the community, I, I like the ideas that you brought forth, but I think they're probably better to be held for the next time that we create a calendar. I hate the idea of taking this away from the parents after we've already approved it. And in regards to moving it to April, my only issue with that is some people have already scheduled, I guess, spring break plans. So I guess at this point they might have. So I don't, I don't like the idea of messing with that right now. So personally, I would, I would think we should postpone this for now, but that's my thought.
If we leave the calendar how it is, how do you get those professional days that you need?
They're still there. It's just that they're, it's all at the beginning of the year. So they're there and we can make use of them. We just felt there was some better use. We won't have any in the second half of the year, for sure. We won't have any there. But, but, you know, it is, that is what it is. If that's what everybody wants, that's fine.
And what is the advantage of having some of those professional days spread out throughout the year as opposed to all in the beginning of the year?
The advantage to having some later in the year is that as you're moving through a school year and you're collecting your data and you need some time to be looking at some data, it's very helpful to have those pieces there as you wanting to be making adjustments to your courses. It's good to have those things there as some other trainings and requirements come around for trainings. It's good to have time built in to be able to do that. So it's helpful to have it spread out. It's helpful to have it for having team time, collaboration time, working through the whole school year also that way. We will still make good use of it where it is because we try to make use of all of that. Can I, if you're going, if you're going to want to keep the calendar, and that's fine, save it. Don't let all my hard work go for nothing simply for next year. But can I, can I suggest that we put snow days back into the week before Easter or are we not open to that also? Right now, there are no snow days in that week, correct? Right now there are no snow days in that week, correct? But again, yeah. Because right now, there's no snow makeup in here, so where you'll go is April 10th for your first makeup day, and then if we don't want to consider flexible instructional days right away, then you'll go to June 10th, I mean June 12th as the second snow day, and they'll just keep getting tacked on here.
It seems to me that that's traditionally been one of our go-to philosophies for snow days in the past, is tack it on to the end of the year. And I think, you know, it seemed like districts got away from snow days in April, right prior to Easter, for the reasons we've talked about, you know, which is that, you know, families if they want to take an extended vacation, you know, depend upon having that sort of a, that significant block of time, you know, in the spring as an alternative to the entire summer, you know, as being that, that vacation time. So I, to me, it's, it's, it's sort of back to a, a traditional model, that's what I remember, snow days being tacked on at the end of the school year. And I know there's, it's, it's a little tough too, because I, I think we have to caution families that this is the model, that's the model we take, that they should not be scheduling vacation time during snow makeup days, so that, that first week after the school year, if we go that route, they, they should be mindful of that, and not pulling their kids out. But I, I personally am, am comfortable with that traditional model and giving folks the opportunity to, to have a, you know, an uninterrupted, you know, vacation time.
So my recommendation would be that we start the 29th, and that we take the 3rd and 4th away, and keep the 10th as a snow makeup day, and then we can use the 9th, if my understanding is from your original presentation, as a snow makeup day as well. And I understand that that's two days where families may have already booked a vacation, but I think for a family to make a decision during the spring break of pulling their kids out of school is a little bit easier than the first day of school. And I think that there's a lot to be said about those families wanting those kids to be there, especially in transition years, but in any year. And I think it's easier to do during spring break, and that kind of gives a negotiation, if you will, to being able to get those professional development days for, for your staff throughout the year, and it'll actually limit our snow makeup days if we can use the 9th as a makeup day. That would be my recommendation.
Can I just make a comment about that? You know, you talked about bringing, you know, making the, adding the 3rd and 4th in as instructional days, and, and I think what that does too, it, it takes away, when you do that, you take away the 1st and the 2nd as well, because that, that weekend prior to the 2nd and 3rd, I'm sorry, prior to the 3rd and 4th, you know, the 1st and the 2nd are typically not, then not available for that more sustained vacation, you know, so you're, what normally would be the, you know, the 1st, you know, through the 9th, then becomes, you know, the 5th through the 9th. So taking off more than just two days, you're taking off those two prior days, the weekends part of it, so, just a thought. It's not just those two days, it's that weekend prior to it as well.
I guess one of the things we need to think about is how important though, spreading out those staff professional development days throughout the year is important. And if that's important to the administration, and this is a way that we can negotiate through that, it's something we should think about, otherwise, you know, to their point, it's going to be all stacked up in the beginning of the year, we know there's a lot of rotation of staff throughout the year, and it would give us an opportunity to have different points throughout the year to get, especially if things change and they need to change the, the professional development.
Yeah, I, I see that point. I, I would prioritize the professional development days at the beginning of the school year, because if we're going to, let's say, something that has, something during professional development has an impact upon the instructional program, you want that to be introduced to teachers and reinforced prior to the start of the school year. So, so I can see the benefits at the beginning of the school year. Later on in the school year, I, I'm not sure exactly what happens at that point where we would, what we're trying to do at that particular point of the year. I mean, and maybe, maybe a little bit more discussion about what's, what is the value, what type of content is introduced, you know, beyond the, in the second half of the school year.
So in the second half of the school year, you're not introducing new content necessarily, right? I mean, that's what these days appear for. But as you're going through your programming and your instruction throughout, throughout the year, there's times that are needed, and our, our teachers don't have time really to get together and to work together really very much during the school year. So that can be a really nice time that as, and especially I, I do like it in March here, where we have a good chunk of the year in, and there can be a lot of reevaluation that's done. I mean, it can happen at the end of the school year, but we really don't have in-service time built in at the end of the school year. So there's evaluation and collaboration time, there's looking at, at this point in time, where we're at, we're just about three quarters of the way through the school year, you can actually start talking about, by this time we are, talking about even next school year and planning for what kind of things might we want to be implementing throughout the summer, as well as for the beginning of the next school year, and we have three quarters of the year through. There's maybe some tweaking to implementation, there's looking at some courses, there's some preparation for the spring courses, looking at some of the things that need to be attended to, unfortunately, around our, our testing windows coming up there, and, and not spending a lot of time with that, but at least being able to, to address some of those topics. So it, it's, it's a nice place to have that collaboration time, that time for looking at data, that time for talking amongst departments, time for planning and evaluating what's happened in the first three quarters of the year. You're not introducing any new stuff at that point in time.
Right, well, thanks, thanks for that explanation.
Is, is that something where you can look at what Mr. Morgan had suggested and then come back to us?
Sure, so what I can do, what I can do is this, it, it does sound like we're not, we're not thrilled with this 25th, so what I can do is we can make the adjustments and move those days down here, and I can bring that, bring back a proposed calendar that looks like that, and the board can vote on a new proposed calendar or, or not, and we can keep it as clean as that, as clean as those pieces.
Is that what we'd like to do?
I think that's best, given the fact that we typically do start on a Monday. I know BCTC does start on August 23rd, which puts our students in limbo with transportation that we.
Our BCTC students.
So I think next year when we look at the calendar, we should take that in consideration.
Do we send them early, the BCTC students? If we, if BCTC starts early and we start the 29th, do we send them early? So they get, if the students get here.
It's conflict though for a lot of parents who work, that can't get their kids to school, but anyway, I think that's something considered for next year. But I do like the fact that if we take the 10th away.
We're not talking about 10, what, what was it?
April, April 10th, and then use that week for snow days versus the end of the.
April 3rd and 4th.
Yep.
And that week is snowed.
And then use the 10th, and then, I don't think we should go into June 12th for snow days as we have it currently, because I know a lot of programs in the summer start around that time too.
Maybe start talking about camps and stuff. So I can bring a calendar that is, that the only adjustment would be, I'm going to leave the rest of the stuff out, keep the rest of the stuff the same. In other words, I won't put these half-days in, I won't, we would have that in there. And I'll put the, we'll put the April 3rd and 4th, I'll make that the days for the new, for the proposal, I'll make that the days, then this, it will stay the same here, and then make these the snow days. And then that'll be the proposal vote. Is everybody okay?
I just want to add, Dr. Battler, that I think that, you know, anybody that's listening or that this gets out, once the new calendar gets out, it'll give the community a time then in the next two weeks to respond, to see how they feel about those changes before we, before we vote.
I agree.
Do we, do we, I just one question, do we, when do we decide graduation date? I noticed that that's undetermined.
Mr. Campbell, I believe you do have something reserved, right?
I don't want to mix up my dates, I'll hand whatever is reflected on the front of that calendar, I think that's, it's a Thursday, the.
8th.
8th. I believe that, that is accurate, that was accurate when I looked at that the other day. And we have a tentative date reserved, it's sometimes there for the next two years.
Well, that's the last student day, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
According to what's up there now.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's just not listed on the calendar itself, so, I mean, are we going, the, the calendar that we publish and vote on, is it going to have a graduation date on it?
Yes, it can now, because Mr. Campbell did just confirm with Santander on those dates, right.
Okay.
I'm looking, I'm looking, Mr. Campbell, because I know that you sent me this date, but I don't have it here right now. But we'll put it on the calendar for sure. It was the 8th?
Yes, I heard today. Yes, you're right.
Thank you.
Okay, next is letter C. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors authorizes the Director of Teaching and Learning to submit to the Pennsylvania Department of Education contingent on federal and state funding the following grants for the 2022, 23 school years, Title I through IV, as well as Ready to Learn.
Dr. Battler, can I just make a quick comment there? For those new to the board and maybe not familiar with the title programs, if I can just give you a little synopsis there, so the title programs, everything Title I, II, III, and IV is actual federal money that comes through the state. So the states get the big pots of money and then are designated off to, to the districts. However, can we start? However, the districts individually apply for these federal grants, so as LEAs. Things change sometimes, and sometimes there's some different kinds of submissions or different things that we meet, and that's where Dr. Flam is actually as we speak, he is at the Federal Programs Conference where we, he learns about the new updates, he, he gets to talk to the PDE folks to clarify any questions. They also do a lot of work there on best practices and how these monies are being implemented in other districts, so we can learn from others too. Title I money is probably our biggest pot out of all of them, and that is directed toward low-income families for, that have high need academically, for the students that have high academic needs. So that's, most of our money from the title programs is in the Title I. Title II is directed at student achievement through providing quality teachers and quality professionals, and sometimes used for like class-sized types of things. So if you think around providing professional development, providing the best-case scenarios for class size, it's not a whole lot of money, but we do have some money there. Title III deals with our ESL programs, our English Second Language programs. Again, that's dependent upon the number of students that you have, and that is specifically for those programs. Again, not usually a large pot of money on that, but we do get some funds there. And Title IV has a general topic around well-rounded education, there's a number of things that are identified under Title IV. One of the main things that a lot of school districts use for is technology is identified in Title IV. And each of these title programs also requires a, a non-public portion to be pulled from it, and that's done in a number of different ways, but you, if you haven't seen already, you might see some things that the school districts in Berks County usually come together, especially around Title I. Sometimes they combine on Title III grants to provide that, that to the non-public. And in Berks County, it's really done through the Berks County Intermediate Unit, that we, they take everybody's non-public funds and kind of make a consortium so that it's worth something, and then are, are able to provide services to the non-public. The Ready to Learn is a state, state line item that you see in the state budget. Mr. Feike and I were talking today about how sometimes the money is in basic education funding, and sometimes it's in the Ready to Learn. There's about 15 different categories, if you Google Ready to Learn, you can kind of find what the 15 different categories are. There's a variety of different ways that you can allocate that money within the district. So just a really quick synopsis of what those are. Thank you, Dr.
Thank you, Dr. Mrazeski. Okay, moving on to item D. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the Teachers in the Parks or TIPS contract for the fully-inclusive TIPS programming option at a flat rate fee of $8,000 and a per-student cost of $300 for approximately 150 students.
Do we have an idea of where that, where those dollars are coming from? Is that coming from the general fund? Is that coming from ESER? What is, what is the plan for that this year?
It's coming from the general fund. Last year, we used ESER to run the whole summer school program, we actually had a full school for 10 weeks, which was Want Creek, between 350 and 400 people. We did not plan any ESER funds this year, because, we can probably go over that tonight if you want, the, the ESER breakdown, but last year, that summer school cost is close to $800,000 for the 10 weeks.
Are you talking about the Tips and Talon?
Tips and Talon, last year.
Summer program, $800,000?
Yeah. If you want. Joe, can you put up the ESER sheet? And I think I gave you something to hand out.
That one.
Can you expand it a little bit? Jason, can you, I think you have the handouts for the board.
Is this for me or for this?
Oh, it's for you, or I'll be handing out this. Okay, just to give you a quick synopsis, the federal COVID grants, we had ESER I, which is roughly 355,000. ESER II was 1.5 millions, or 1,562,571. And ESER III, which is just approved this past year, was 3,160,628. ESER I was all spent in the 2021 school year, 355,000. We spent roughly 14,000 in educational software, 312,553 on textbooks, and another 28,447 on instructional supplies. ESER II was pretty well-spent in 21, 22 school year. Salaries just for the summer programs were 392,656. Benefits for the summer programs were 166,650. Purchased services for the summer programs is another 144,265. And that's, probably the people in education can tell you more what they were, but we had a lot of different programs going on there. Supplies to address literacy and learning loss is 476,741. Operation and maintenance, which is, we call it HVAC improvements, but it was really cleaning all the duckworks in the district, getting rid of the, the dirt and things, addressing air quality. We spent 159,505 on that, we bid that last year, that was completed this fall. And textbooks, grades V and VI was 222,753. That pretty much used the ESER II funds. This year, we also started in ESER III funds, 40,000 was geared towards the library, 100,000 for the cyber school. 40,000 was geared towards the library, 100,000 for the cyber school. Intervention personnel, there's three positions. I think there's, the positions are ESL. What are the position titles? And that, we have planned to fund that for three years, and at the end of three years, we'll look at moving those into another position through attrition. K to 12 math, science, social studies, tax, textbook, laptops, hotspots this year, 337,703. Next two years, out of Esser, 350,000 each. Purchased professional services, I think Dawn, you can tell me what those were. 45,000 this year, 75,000 next year. That's
That's the additional contracted social worker.
Okay. And then what we still have to play with is instructional supplies, about 20,000 this year, 20,000 next year. Ending up with another 2,400 year 23, 24. And that could be anything from, you know, paper to reading books or whatever. So we don't have that type of money this year for summer school, which I think we, we mentioned last year that it's a once-and-done type of thing. So normally, we're going right back to the normal roughly 30-some thousand we give to the TIPS program in the summer.
So I have this at $53,000. And that's, that's our top-line number? There's no other expenses that's going to go into that? Is that correct?
That's correct.
No transportation costs, nothing like that?
No, but that's, we don't transport. We haven't in the past. Again, I'm using the royal we, but we haven't in the past transported the students for the TIPS program.
Yeah, we're going back to pre-pandemic levels.
And how are the, just curious, how were those 150 students selected?
Great. And that's what I was going into. Okay, so, so what we've looked at doing at this point in time, and I just want to mention, Mr. Hathaway is here, who's, as we know, very, very involved with our, with our TIPS program. So maybe, Matt, if I look to you, maybe you can holler out some answers here and there. But we have, what we've, what we're looking at doing with the 150 is that 50 of the students, so the cost, as you can see on the contract, is $300 per student, which is TIPS completely running the program, hiring folks, taking care of programming, taking care of everything. After the Talons school last year, it's, it's well worth having them, having them do that because the amount of time that it does take. So we felt that was the best way to go. So 50 of those students will be coming from our recommendations as our title one, our neediest students, our neediest from financial and academic. We'll look for recommendations from our reading specialists and teachers in each of the buildings. The, the next 100, then, students, or the, yeah, the next 100 students would be those students that would pay, we're looking at $100 per, per student, so that the district is still picking up $200 of that fee for those pieces. And that's where our money takes us at that point in time. And that is about, according to what Brian was, was looking, is about what the district has contributed in the past, according to the numbers that we were able to pull up. There were more students, students involved in the past, but some of that, and Matt can speak to this maybe, some of that has come from outside organizations or even internal organizations that have been able to provide some funding for other students and to have more students. And we still welcome that to add to our 150 students. We welcome, if there's any internal or external organizations that would like to provide scholarship money for some students, that we could fund some additional pieces. We, we would welcome that, those pieces, and they could be added to the 150. Matt, did I misspeak on anything there?
No.
You can do.
We met, discussed the options for the summer. We were very grateful for you to support the Teacher in the Park program. The $300 per child, I, I hope in hindsight is a reasonable number for the Teacher in the Park organization to hire teachers if we have anything that we do. We, in order to meet a, a budget, we made a couple of decisions. The one was to reduce the number from our typical 300, 300 children in the program to 150. And then we also limited the number of locations, so we are in partnership with the Antietam District, with the Antietam Pool this year, so we can control some of the site management costs as well to get to that $300 number. And we also said, pre-pandemic, we were, you know, steady at around 300 children in the program. We weren't sure what would happen this time, but we did want to make sure we remove the stigma from summer learning by opening it up to the public. But obviously, by limiting seats, we may be in a position where we have to turn some, all some children away. But that seems to be what the budget for this year demands, so that is the current course of action.
And again, are we just at Antietam? Is that where we are this year? Is that, we just have the one site, okay?
Yeah, that's our, probably our biggest space. And with the Antietam Rec Program not running this year as a, as a private, you know, opportunity for children, we also have opportunities for indoor space as well. So we'll be using just that one site, again, partially in response to the district's need to control costs for this summer.
In the past, did we spend, when you, when we had the 300 kids, how much did the district spend at that time?
It's a little complicated, but the district at that time was roughly spending, and Dr. Hamburger can correct me if I'm wrong, because we did this together, roughly $100 a child, but the parents were also contributing 95 a child, so the cost was around 200 a child. But we were also subcontracting at that point, at the district's request, with communities and schools of Pennsylvania. A couple of the things that are affecting costs this year. The first one was now Teachers in the Parks, our nonprofit organization's handling everything. Because we have no scale to do this, our expenses are very high per teacher to run payroll, to run insurances and things like that. You can obviously save money by running a program yourself, but then you'd be doing all the, the hiring and everything on your own. And that, that is also a cost that wasn't factored in the last year. The cost of a teacher increased in last year's program from 30 to 40 an hour, and the supervisor one from 30 to 50 an hour. And then there was also an increase in the number of hours for our K to two program that used to be an hour and a half, and will this summer be two hours. And then the cost of everything went up. You know, the cost of a T-shirt for us went from 390 to 740. So, you know, there were just a lot of things that we had to consider when making a proposal to the district that hopefully is viewed as a reasonable price for the service. One really positive thing we have going this summer is the Exeter Teachers in the Park program is up for the biggest award in the nation this summer. So we are currently a semifinalist for the National Summer Learning Association's Award of Summer Excellence. So that is something that we hope to feature at the Antietam Pool this year and would gain a pretty prestigious national spotlight in the event that the board would support this work this summer.
Mr. Hathaway, just a question for you. In years past, or even last year with the Tips and Talons program, was there any measurable results or anything expected as far as outcomes?
No, our outcomes are always been positive. You know, outcomes are very tough for a six-week program. We typically rely just on district data from the end of the year and the beginning of the year, but obviously, there's even gaps between the start of our, the end of the school year and the start of our program and the end of our program and the beginning of the school year. But we've proven that we can, we can bridge a child's reading fluency rate through the summer. So a child that comes to us reading at a certain rate leaves being able to read at a certain rate. We've also established that we can bridge the gap in basic math skills as well. So a child entering our program is leaving with that same skill set. And a child, just to understand the goals of a summer learning program, if, if this child can truly bridge the summer gap and, and pick up in September where they left off in June, even with no gain, statistically, that puts them about a month to two months ahead of children who have slid during the summer. So those have been some of the very positive outcomes. We really listen to the community as what parents want in a program. And that's how we develop our two-time-a-week or four-time-a-week schedule, four, six weeks to take really the heart of the summer. This year, the programming is between June the 27th and then the first week in August.
Thank you. So Matt, the, the program structure is, is back to the, the structure that it was pre, pre-COVID? In terms of the number of hours per week, the nature of the
Yeah.
services that are being provided, the locations that you're offering the service?
No, the locations have been minimized to help control some of the site management costs. So we are now only operating at the Antietam Pool, but we are offering that program to a wider range of children. So now, students currently in pre-K and currently, currently in fourth grade will have an opportunity at the Antietam Pool, as long as they register quickly, because I have a feeling those 150 slots will fill rather rapidly.
Yeah, I mean, is it first come, first served? Is that the way this will work?
There will be a, essentially a coupon code for students identified through the school district to register for free. We've always had great supporters in our community, Spine and Wellness, the Exeter Dare Queen, the Exeter Teachers Education Association have always contributed to make those opportunities possible for our kids. But, I mean, largely, we are running a modified version this year, to answer your question, due to restrictions that the district has in mind.
Any, getting any contributions from the Education Foundation this year?
We, the district has not approached the Education Foundation, but they've always been one of our biggest supporters. So in the event that either one, we wanted to open it beyond 150 students or to help subsidize the cost of the students in need, to offer it free for more children, I think that would be a wonderful organizational approach.
Yeah. I mean, I fully support the program. I'm just a little surprised with, you know, the costs that you described. You know, I think when we ran the program previously, I think the district cost ran around $24,000 a year from what I can recall. And I think if we're up to 50, did you say, Mr. Morgan, we're 53? That's a pretty significant
It's actually 43 with the contribution of the parents.
Oh, okay.
And, and just, and just to explain too, that contribution, the contract was, was kind of rearranged here. So before, the district had paid the roughly $100, the parents paid roughly $100. But Teachers in the Parks always took the risk of the parents not paying that $100. Where we reworked it now, so that the district is paying the true cost per child, but then when parents pay to register, that will be a check coming back to the district for those registrations. And, and relatively speaking, I think especially, you know, considering last, last summer's programming, I hope this is viewed as a, a pretty reasonable cost per child. Just looking at the numbers and, and surprise explanation, it seemed to be about 2,500 to 3,000 a child last year. So we're about a tenth of the cost.
Oh, yeah. This is, I mean, certainly, I mean, I think one of the wonderful things about TIPS is it's probably one of the most economical options that districts could consider. When, when you consider the cost associated with running your own programs in the school district, this has really been a great value.
And I could be cost-saving. If you could truly zero-based balance, if you're doing some districts where districts run their own programming, you might save 25% off that, you know, running it yourself, but you also have very high benefit ratios. Where we don't have those benefit ratios.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm just a little disappointed that we'll have, you know, fewer kids in the program than we had previously.
We share that concern.
And we'd love if we could find some additional funding for that. But I, I squeezed the purse strings as much as I could over here, as tightly as I could and as often as I could. And I think I got every penny out right now.
Come on, Mr. Feike.
As I said before
I just made you the bad guy.
I'm making a recommendation, but I don't vote.
Mr. Hathaway, first of all, thanks, sorry. Thanks for all you do. I mean, this is truly a great program. You talked about budgetary constraints and about how you, you know, so in your perfect world, you know, what, what does that look like? How many students are enrolled? You know, what is that, what, what is the additional cost that we're looking at to the district, so we can get an idea of what we're missing?
The initial proposal, and I just must say, Dr. Mieszewski has been wonderful. She reps reached out to us, and it's been a very real conversation about, you know, how many children we can serve versus how many dollars we have. Ideally, and I don't know post-COVID, what the parent issues will be yet, and engaging their children back in summer learning programs. But the way we've written the contract, ideally, the, the initial proposal we made was for 100, to have the district commit to 150 students and then pay 300 a child, up to, up to 300 children. So in an ideal world, I think we can serve that, but I don't know that we can serve that at one location. I think the, the community is better served at localized locations. If we were to go back into the Rain Hollow Park, if we're going to go back into Pressman Pool, if we're going to go back into, really, the Exeter Library, you know, all the five to seven locations that we served before, it just becomes a matter of cost at that point. But a child who is currently sitting in an Exeter Township program could easily walk over to a blanket before. Where now, because of the situation that we're in, you know, now the parents would have to drive them to the Antietam Pool and then pick them up with this program, you know, so it's not as immersed in there. But it would essentially be, you know, instead of 150 kids, it'd be 300 kids, and it would be double the cost, is how that would work out. Or the district can save money in scale if they chose to do it themselves.
Thank you.
Matt, one of the numbers we've been focused on is the 40% of third graders who can't read at grade level. Now, that number is now more than a year old, but I imagine the number is probably still pretty accurate. What kind of preference is being given to those kids who can't read at grade level?
I, I think they get all the preference. However, one thing that we work on as we present nationally now is making sure that there's no stigma to that work. You know, so a child who enters a program should not feel that they're there because they struggle. You know, they should feel, feel a part of something great. So absolutely, the work of our teachers to recruit the students, to get the parents the information, the work of our reading intervention specialists to reach out, they are absolutely the priority. But I think in that statement, it's really important to understand how children learn over the summer. And there's this idea recently, especially since COVID dollars came, that a children, a child is going to learn like a skyscraper, where we're two years behind on a project. And all of a sudden, you can increase the number of trucks and you can increase the number of everything. You can get 1,000 more workers in, you can just shove more in there. That's not how it works. Children grow like trees, and it's a very organic process. You know, so it's not as if we can send them to school longer over the summer. We have to give them quality experiences, you know, and it's a, a tree grows with a, a, a myriad of environmental factors. You know, it's water, it's soil, it's, it's sun, it's, you know, fertilizer for a struggling tree. And if all we're going to do is increase the amount of time for our kids over the summer, that's only one of the factors. There's social, emotional, there's physical, you know, there's the math, there's reading. So the TIPS program is designed to kind of address all those things in a non-threatening environment. So, I mean, of the 150 spots, those 150 spots are really pre-K through current four. So that's not serving a tremendous number at each grade level, but it's, it's serving a lot. You know, and I think with the 150 we get, if we can work together with the district, as we always have, to reach the kids that need it the most, I think we can be very successful in the future.
Thank you.
I had a quick question, Matt, and I love TIPS, just because my kids were always in it and I thought it was great. But my, my one concern is, so with Tips and Talons, we bus the, the kids to the school. And one of the things that I had heard a lot from different community members was how great that was because they couldn't get their kids there. My biggest concern when I'm voting on this is we get 150 students who really need to be there and who would, you know, flourish in what you have set up, but they don't come. They can't get there. So how are we going to make sure that they get there, I guess?
In an ideal world, in a community-based summer learning model, we go to where children are organic.
Right.
And under this current circumstance, that's not necessarily the ideal for this summer, but it's something to work for for future summers. The idea that a child already exists there, so you don't have to transport them. Or like last year, the decision was made to bus everybody, but at the expense of a lot of money. So those would really be your two options, is to open up, open up sites that are better located in our communities. And I, we've worked with all those sites already. So I, I agree with you. You know, transportation is, is a big concern. In the past, we've worked with children in ESL, we've worked with children where they replaced their ESY program with a Teacher in the Parks program. The district has provided transportation, but those are things, you know, as we're trying to break down a budget here, that we're not concerned.
So do you believe, I mean, so do you believe that these students will, do you think that they will do the entire program?
I hope. I, I don't know.
Yeah.
Pre, pre-COVID, I would have said yes.
Right.
We would try to find ways to get them there. But 150 spots, in my opinion, are going to fill up rather quickly. So, you know, we're just going to work with the district to make sure that that coupon code is prioritized for children that need it the most.
So there is no onus on the families to say, the, the tax dollars, you know, are, are paying for this student. If you don't show up, you're going to be billed for that time.
That would be an option for an in-house-run program. You're absolutely correct. But we're billing at a, a number of seats here in order for us to pay for all the things that we're saying we can pay for. But yes, you know, in the event that you want to zero-base budget this, you could put contingencies on attendance. You know, you could say, hey, listen, you know, the, the cost is a hundred bucks, you know, but if you don't attend, 75% of the classes, okay? The other thing that came up was title money. Teachers in the Parks used to have title title dollars at the district level. Those were removed last year, so there are no title dollars for teaching in the parks anymore, which is helping to offset the cost that you had addressed there. So a lot of those dollars that we're talking about were kind of built in. And that's where you could provide a child that received title support, a grant to come. But now, those are just being billed at $300 a kid and hoping to raise dollars privately with our community.
So, Mr. Feig, we're talking about $43,000. I mean, we talk a lot about our students, and we spend money in a lot of different places. I'm looking at an SRR three that has, that we're waiting for of $3.1 million. I'm looking at a cyber school that we're spending, we're going from $100,000 this year to $600,000 next year.
Yeah, I wanted to ask about that, too.
And we're trying to find $43,000 to give an extra 150 kids this experience. I'm just wondering why we can't find those monies.
Let me just say that, so wherever they come from, they come from. So these are monies are what are allocated to, so it's not like we're taking an additional $600,000 and spending it on the cyber. We're allocating the cyber money for those SRR funds. So if they're, it's not that they don't get spent. So it's just $43,000 that, an additional $43,000. It's not that it would be coming from SRR. It has to come from somewhere. So if we use the money from the cyber, then the general fund would back, backfill that 43.
I guess what I'm asking is, why are we seeing a 600% increase in the cyber, the cyber school this year?
It's a matter of what's being allocated, correct?
Well, actually, when I allocate the funds, I'm looking at one-time expenditures. So I'm looking at a lot of technology buying next year for the cyber academy, so they're set. I try not to use one-time money for long-term commitments. To me, if you're going to put $43,000 into summer school, you should keep it going. You know, the problem is, last year, we spent $800,000. Now everyone wants to have the same thing again. This year, we don't, we don't have that money. So it's, I think PASBO and PSBA used to say, watch what you spend on. It's a one-time money. Once you come to a cliff, you're going to fall off. So if you want, we could probably, you know, we could increase the budget and put it into the budget. I would not suggest using one-time money if you're not, don't plan to do it again the following year, and the following year, and the following year after that.
Well, I know we have to wait to see your budget presentation today, but I'm not in favor of adding $43,000 to the budget. I'm in favor of finding $43,000 that we can save in other areas, so we can give these kids these experiences.
And just so you know, I mean, my ask certainly was not for more money than what we had agreed to before. It would be wonderful to give it to more children if they are interested. In that event, that we went to 300, TIPS would just ask for a commitment of 150 kids to make sure that our base expenses are covered. And then we would just bill out at 300 a kid above 150, to make sure that there's no, to mitigate the risk. The previous contracts with communities and schools in Pennsylvania used to, used to have to pay for all 300 up front, and that's just how it worked. We just wanted to be sensitive to COVID and the district's budget to make sure that we actually had the number of children in the program.
Yeah, so tonight's ask is that we commit for the 150, but we're not limited to the 150.
Well, my ask is that we can start advertising-
Well, that's, I was getting to that, Matt.
I don't get it. I mean, would your budget be deposited for 150 students?
So Matt's other, Matt's other ask is that, that he would like to start, if it's okay with the board, he would like to start advertising now for this, rather than wait for the board vote in two weeks. It does delay the advertising. But understanding if the board would be more comfortable with, with waiting until after the board vote for that. So the ask is, would there be, would, is it okay to start advertising, or should we wait till after board vote?
I personally would prefer to wait until after we vote on it. I don't know how everybody else feels about that.
I would prefer to wait only because these 150 students are going to be chosen, so to speak, like given a coupon. So I'm assuming that there's not going to be a ton of advertising, because there won't be that many spots. Is that correct?
The idea here is that it would be open to the public, so that we don't limit the stigma, and that only children who struggle vote in the program. I think that that would be bad for the program itself.
Okay.
But I will, I will leave it to the board. I will say, we typically start advertising beginning of March. Our deadlines are in the middle of May, in order to order materials for Exeter children. You know, in the event that the board is considering offering it to, to nobody, which would be an option tonight, then I would suggest holding off. But we're going to miss a pretty vital window here for advertising, if we don't start in at least a week or so.
But if we're, but if we're advertising for everybody, which I, I agree, those, those over and above, these 150 are paying the $300 flat rate?
And then, yes, I mean, for kids that go to this other program for free, then parents who are contributing that money would come back to the district.
Right. I just mean, forgive me, I don't mean to sound silly, but I, if we are choosing, so we're choosing the, the 50 students, and then the next 100 are first come, first served?
As it stands right now.
As it stands right now, first come, first served. But say there are 400, because everybody wants their kids to, I'm just saying, there were a lot when, you know, a few, a few years ago, there were a lot.
Last year, you were at 400.
Right. Yeah, there, there were a lot. So let's, let's just be, so let's say that there are 300 that, that sign up. 150 are paid for by us. The other 150, their parents have to pay $300?
No, they would pay the 95. It's always 95 for families. So they're, they're not paying the other way.
But only if we had funds to cover anybody with this.
But only if we have funds to cover that.
Correct. I mean, but honestly, we're shutting it down at 150.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So if-
Yeah, it will not be unless the board decides to offer it to more than 150.
So my, so here's where my concern is. This is, this is my personal concern, because I know a lot of parents who want their kids to go to TIPS. They love TIPS. They think it's great. However, they might not be in the first come, first served, but they might feel as though their kids really need to be at TIPS. And there is going to be a really huge issue if that happens. And I mean, a re, pretty big issue, I, I think, if they have to cut it.
I think TIPS has always been incredibly supportive, and we can accommodate a larger program.
Okay.
But again, you know, with the budget we came up with, 150 seemed to be the magic number.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Now, just along that same line, what, is it, is it even conceivable to think that a parent might say, I really want my child to be in TIPS. I realize they didn't make the, in the first 100? Would they be able to pay the full cost of tuition for TIPS themselves?
Our recommendation is always under $100 to make it accessible for all families. Our belief is that all children slide. Some slide more than others because of other factors. So it's always been our philosophy, our board's philosophy, to share the responsibility with a district who doesn't want to contribute in our experience to a child's summer learning. And our experience has really just wanted us to do that. You know, so TIPS will now collect your $300, we'll do everything without bothering it. So it's always been this idea of a shared responsibility between the district and the community for children that we do charge. But make grants available for anybody that can't afford it.
Yeah, it seemed like before, you know, the, the program was a little bit more like a summer enrichment program. Now it seems like a large part of it's really dedicated to helping those kids who are maybe a little bit behind and, and need the summer program to really kind of, that extra benefit of instruction over the summer to help to catch-
COVID has compounded the problem, but our mission hasn't changed. Enrichment, yes, it's actually maintenance of skills in primary.
So what I hear, Matt, is that we should wait until after the board vote, so?
I, that's the direction.
That's, that's where we're going to go.
Matt, will you be able to identify those children who have been recommended by the school district that will have transportation problems? When will you be able to identify that, or is the school assisting in identifying it?
Without the school district, it really, we can't do that. We can, we did have a line in a, in a registration form that said, would you like transportation to be considered? We remove that as it stands right now, but we could add that back in if the district would like to go down.
The question was, when would you identify that that child will not be able to attend?
We won't know if they won't be able to attend, honestly, because they won't sign up. Typically, if they know transportation's available during the signup process, they would click, yes, I even need a transportation.
Okay.
So otherwise, no, we don't know who, would it be. And then again, if they're locked in childcare, wherever they would be over the summer, our suggestion in the future would be to send teachers into those community-based programs as they disperse.
And TIPS was traditionally never situated, I mean, up until last year, it was always up to the parents to transport, correct? I mean, last year was the, was the exception.
We've used actually a lot of the children that had used Teacher in the Parks as ESY, or some children that, that we could use different title money at ESL.
Okay.
Mr. Hathaway, you had mentioned the title funds used to cover a larger portion of the, of the cost of the tuition cost, and you said it's no longer happening. Do we know where those, were those title funds reallocated to something else, or?
All I was told was that there was no title money available for teachers in the parks anymore.
Do we know where the, where the title money got transferred to?
That we'd have to talk to Mr. Plam, but-
Okay.
Yeah.
I seem to recall it was about $5,000.
It wasn't a lot, but yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah, but it covered a substantial amount of students that might receive it. And we were also able to raise money against that. You know, so we could say we have $5,000 in, you know, in funding here, can we match those funds with other donations, which we don't have an opportunity?
Yeah. And the other, the other, you know, little bit of money came from the Ed Foundation. And I'm curious to see whether or not the Ed Foundation is interested, whether their budget can accommodate anything.
They've always been supportive. In this relationship that we have right now, I would suggest the district, you know, approach them for whatever, whatever needs they-
I think Dr. Plam is in conversation.
That, that would be, in my eyes now. I sit on that board, so it would be best if, if the district approached the board.
Thank you.
Moving on to item E, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a service agreement between EBS and the Exeter Township School District for registered behavior technician services at a rate of $41.65 per hour for 35 hours per week for the remainder of the 21-22 school year, for a total cost of $24,781.75. See if I have any discussion about that.
Well, I, I have a question. What, what does, what does that involve?
Dawn?
What, what is, what does EBS do?
So registered behavior technicians are, they work in a paraprofessional capacity, but they have more training than the paraprofessionals that we hire through our support staff contract. And they work with our students who have very significant behavioral needs, so they're part of that support service that they receive. With regard to EBS, they're just one of the agencies that provides that service to us. One of the agencies that we were using is having staffing issues, surprise, surprise. So we're utilizing EBS in their place. You're welcome.
Mrs. Harris, you mentioned there was another agency that we're, we're dropping for, and we're replacing them with this?
Nope.
No?
Nope. Keeping them all on the rolls. That's typically what you do with these types of professional services. You leave the contract in place in the event that they would be able to come back with staffing if the other agency weren't be able to provide it if their staffing falls through, and so on and so forth.
So are, are the costs being spread then across the, the-
There's no cost unless you're utilizing the service.
Unless the service is utilized.
Yeah, right, right. Exactly.
Thank you.
We, so we get billed for the staff that they send and the hours that they work.
Okay. So there's no upfront commitment?
Nope.
All right, moving on to F. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the continuation of the contract for services agreement between Ostile's Rehabilitations Services Incorporated and Exeter Township School District for compensation reimbursement for services from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. See if I have any questions?
Just the same question. What, what kind of services are we talking about?
Sure thing. In particular with Ostile's, we use their occupational therapy and their physical therapy services. I think you've been utilizing Ostile's for those servants, services since around 1999. They provide services to a large portion of Berks County. They're a well-known, well-respected agency. And so that's the particular service that we utilize them for, but they do offer other services as well.
Thank you. Is a three-year contract typical with, with them?
Yeah, as far as I can remember, working back in other school districts and having worked with Ostile's previously, they've always issued three-year contracts.
Okay.
And their costs have been reasonable over time. There is a slight increase. The last time you had a contract was 2018, of course, if you track the timeline. And there is a slight increase, but it's reasonable, you know, given that it's a three-year contract.
It, it sounds like we can, either party can break out of this contract with 60 days prior notice, and there's no type of termination or anything like that that's, the cost that's attributed to it.
Correct. And this, you know, one of the challenges, anytime you work with agencies, when you're contracting these types of professional services, is one of the things that you're looking for in particular is consistency over time, right? So just like you don't shop around for a new fourth grade teacher every year, we try not to shop around for a new occupational therapist every year. And so as you're in the business for a while, you get to learn which agencies are a little bit more reliable, which are more consistent, which you develop relationships with over time. And in this particular case, Ostile's is one of those agencies that consistently over time is able to keep staffing in place for long periods, so that you don't have a lot of turnover.
Is Becky Ostile still running, operate the program, or she retired now?
I believe she's retired now. Yeah, I believe it's changed hands.
And one of the concerns that I had, that I think that you were, you could speak to, is that reimbursement will include, but is not limited to onsite and virtual evaluation, consultation, treatment time. Because they're in Exton, you said they usually have no issues coming up here, because I don't like to usually see virtual for OT or?
Yeah, the virtual provision is not there. Typical provision, that's not what they offer to us on a regular basis. What they offer is in-person provision. That clause is in there because we do have students who are in our virtual program. We have a virtual academy here now in Exeter. And so sometimes there are students with special needs in our virtual academy who still require an offer of FAP, a Free Appropriate Public Education. And sometimes those services that they need are occupational therapy. And for example, a student who might be in our virtual academy, because coming on campus is difficult for them due to a medical condition, they may require telehealth and require receiving that service that way. So that's why that's in there.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to letter G. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve an agreement with Redding Area Community College to continue to offer dual enrollments to the students of Exeter Township Senior High School for the 22-23 school year. The tuition rate is $99 per credit, the same rate as last year. Student is responsible for paying cost per credit.
It's my understanding that if there is a family that cannot afford this, however, they want their student to be enrolled in dual enrollment, that there are programs to help them with that? Are we able to confirm that?
There are a limited number of scholarships that RAC does offer. Those have varied over the years. This last year has been a very different year. In the fall, they did offer tuition for all students, and then this spring, they secured resources to really extend that to any family that had a waiver. Traditionally, we've had students apply for assistance, usually, I, I want to confirm this, but I want to say around 10 to a dozen students. And all of them have received those waivers, to my knowledge. But by and large, the answer's yes, but I would want to confirm that, that all of those have gotten. So I don't want to say that's assured for everybody.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, that the, the cost doesn't prohibit if, if there's a student that, that this could benefit, that they're getting the opportunity to go.
Those scholarships are through RAC. They're not district scholarships.
Gotcha. Thank you.
While you're, while you're at the podium, did you, did you check into the numbers for dual enrollment?
Sure. Those numbers have fluctuated a bit over the years. 2021 was the probably more characteristic. We had 135 students take about 186 seats. This last year, because, I believe, because of the- This last year, because I believe because of the, um, assistance that was offered to all students, we had a hundred and eighty five students that sat in a hundred, two hundred and forty two seats.
Moving on to item H. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following list of staff conferences. I don't know if you.
It's it's not necessary to read them all.
I did have a question. Um, not sure if anyone can answer this, but regarding the chaperoning to students to the All-State Festival, what is the All-State Festival? Do we know?
Yep, so that's when our students, um, have auditioned and moved their themselves up through the ranks to be on the state band, state chorus, state orchestra. So it's a competitive environment, and they've earned those seats in those state bands, state chorus, state orchestra. I think we have chorus and band. I think we have, that's where our representatives are. So it's just like if we would have team advisor going to a state competition for TSA or for a sporting event or whatever. So it's like the advisor going through that.
Okay, and then the lodging, that's for two nights? Is that that's for one person?
I'm sorry, which number is it?
That's okay, that's number two.
Number two?
Number two with a conference request.
Uh, that might be, I'd have to double check on that, but that might be for the students also, but I need to check on that. That might be the lodging for the students also.
Yeah, if you could check, thank you. And then the other question I had was, um, number seven regarding the athletic director. Uh, I'm sorry, athletic trainer. Um, is, do we typically pay for continuing edu- is that considered continuing education? Is that something that we typically pay for with our athletic trainer? Is that part of their contract?
Um, Dr. Haller.
Audrey Dickman is actually one of our employees. She's not contracted. Um, she's under the teacher's contract, so, uh, going to conferences or taking continuing ed is is part of something that she can she can do. Um, I did check with Mr. LaGaff about this particular conference. And just like educators are required to do Act forty five, um, she is required to maintain and take certain classes to maintain her certification. This conference offers, uh, some of those items that she can take, sit in, and will work towards her maintaining her certification. In addition to, um, Miss Dickman also takes classes at, uh, courses at Penn State Berks.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Number two, uh, safety care trainer training. Could, uh, I assume that that's Ms. Harris? Uh, could could you explain what that is and and what the purpose of it is?
Sure thing. Um, so safety care training, I feel like, um, now that I'm explaining it, I feel like we did talk about this at a a previous meeting. Safety care training is offered through a company called Q B S. Um, and so there are mandates around having staff trained in de-escalation and restraint procedures as it relates to special education students. But then above and beyond that, um, you want your crisis teams in your buildings to be trained in that kind of strategy and model. And, um, so this is for the purpose of training a trainer in-house because that certification is an annual recertification. We have a large group of people in the district who need that continual recertification over and over. So it's your special education teachers, all of your paraprofessionals that work with certain types of students, a lot of regular education staff, a lot of administrators who carry that safety care, uh, training. And so it becomes more cost-effective to have your trainer in-house. The I U does offer some training around safety care training. They have a few slots each year where they're able to do, uh, recertification for staff and some initial trainings, but they're not able to support the needs of all of the districts in the county. So districts are expected to take up that enterprise on their own.
And how many trainers do we have in the district?
Um, so that's the reason I think it came up. So we had some turnover in trainers because we had some staff leave and some resignations. And so we used to have three, and I think this came up previously either a month or two ago because we, two of the people that were trained left. So this will be the third person then that we're adding back into that rotation. That's one of the struggles is, you know, sometimes when you have that turnover, you have some of that those replacement costs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, is that everything, Dr. Battler?
Yes, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Thank you very much for doing that.
I would just like to say thanks to Dr. Battler. Nice job.
Next is Finance, Facilities and Audit Committee. Mr. Mel.
Dr. Hearing, the moment you've all been waiting for, Mr. Feig will be presenting the budget. I'm gonna hand out some paperwork he has.
I'm gonna do just a little bit of a preamble, um, before Mr. Feig begins. Um, because not maybe not everybody has gone through, uh, the budget budget process before, seen the budget process before. And sometimes schools do it a little differently. Um, I, Mr. Feig, obviously, and his team are the ones that put together all these numbers. Um, there's the team, the team of administrators, um, work on their individual building budgets, department budgets. All of that is consolidated, worked through, gone over with a, I don't, not a fine-tooth comb yet, maybe just like a hairbrush or something at this point in time, but a fine-tooth comb over the next, um, over the next month or so. Um, one of the things is that, um, both of our, um, ways of going through budget is not to present some kind of wish list of budget items and, um, you know, kind of inflate things and then try to, you know, stab them down and get them to a reasonable piece. We try to come in with as best and reasonable numbers as we can as to what we have to work with. Um, and that's kind of our process that we're looking at. So when we're gonna be talking about some of of these numbers, you'll see that, um, they're as bottom line as they can be for right now. There's reasons that there can't be definite. Um, we are negotiating three, uh, contracts right now that are are not finalized. Um, so there's a little, um, unknown there. Um, the state budget is not approved. Um, they don't have a deadline to be approved. Schools must be approved by June thirtieth, and the state, we've gone, Brian and I were talking, because we've been around both for a long time, um, that sometimes state budgets don't, didn't get approved till October, and we didn't have some funds and monies coming in. Um, so we do have to wait and see what that is. Um, our medical insurance, um, that'll be a May decision, probably. We'll probably have a finalization in May on the medical insurance and where that stands. Um, so Mr. Feig and his office works as best with those numbers that it that they can to be able to present to you tonight the preliminary pieces. Um, and then over the next month, and then finally into June, um, we'll be able to finalize a lot more numbers and be able to have a more concrete piece. But this is definitely to give you a pretty good idea, a pretty firm idea of where we are and the work that needs to be done as we're going through that. Um, so, Brian?
Okay, uh, I guess why I want to first start out is this budget is status quo. I'm not looking at changing anything. I'm looking at exactly where we're at now, the same programs, the same staff. Um, with projected increases in salaries, projected increases in, uh, benefits. Right now, I think I have four percent in for medical. The, um, consortiums guaranteed no more than five. Usually when they say that, they come down a percent or two. You know, I think this year they'll probably come down a percent. They're not gonna come down two percent because they, the the health insurance consortium is open up to clinics, uh, so I don't think they really can come down that far. Um, the other thing is I want you to understand is we passed the budget last year with a one point six million dollar deficit. So status quo, we go into this year with a one point six million dollar deficit. Uh, with all the requests we have, uh, from the departments and I, as Dr. M said, you know, I took out the wish list and put in what I I felt should be there. Uh, maintenance-wise, you know, uh, things like the buses, there's in there for two new buses plus a a mini bus. Uh, we decided to go with the mini buses here instead of new vans because you can't even buy a van. And there's an unknown state contract, and if they they come out, they won't be delivered next year, but you can get a mini bus. And it actually would save us some money on on certain areas. Uh, so I'll be bidding out for two buses for this coming year and a mini bus. Um, maintenance-wise or capital request, uh, most of it is painting, uh, some tile work, some repair work. Uh, the high school and library asked for new, um, cafeteria tables, and I still gotta come out with the numbers. I think their numbers are a little bit high, but it's not a a big decrease. Um, but right now, uh, I'm looking at, uh, difference between revenues and expenditures, about two million dollars, two point one million. I think I can get that down to two million, um, on tweaking some other numbers. Uh, their revenues have actually increased since last year. Um, and that's mainly due to local, um, and state state increase about three percent. Um, well, I should say I'm estimating three percent. The governor's budget had put in an eighteen percent increase the year before. They asked for twenty, and they gave us two and a half. This year, they're asking for eighteen. I figure we'll get about three percent increase to be safe. I'd love to see more. Uh, we'll probably know more after we pass our budget. We'll know closer to a figure sometime in June. Um, our local revenue has increased a little bit by assessments, but mostly because our collection rate went from ninety eight point six percent to ninety nine point two percent. Um, the, uh, transfer taxes past year was, you know, the highest we've ever had uh, because of people buying and selling. Uh, it still looks like it's on track to be a good year, so I I don't have it as high as it ever was, but I have it pre-pandemic levels. Uh, I'm hoping in the future, because I I've been driving around the district, I've seen a lot of new homes going up, that we have increased assessment on real, on residential. Uh, hopefully in the future, we'll see increased assessments in commercial. I don't see that as much of a change this coming year. I figure two or three years, we'll start seeing an increase in residential. And hopefully, uh, if things turn around, we see increase in in commercial. Um, so right now, I have a budget of seventy nine million, six fourteen, six oh five for revenues. Um, well, before I go on with that, Joe, can you up, go up this page? One thing I wanted to talk about, oh, right there, is our our fund balance. The auditor mentioned this. Uh, we have sixteen million dollar fund balance. Of that, uh, two point three million is committed, and one E talks committed. That's bills that have to be paid that are already already booked from last year, uh, assigned. Um, if you look right below that, we have net assignments. This board in the past has put money aside for future, uh, budget deficits, future pension obligations, contractual wage and benefits increases in future, technology equipment, soul studies licenses, uh, replacement of bus radios and debt service increase. Uh, as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, we had nine million dollars in net assignments. Uh, with the budget you approved this past, or the board approved this past year with the one point six seven seven deficit, that'll bring the net assignments down to to seven point three eight three million. Um, with this budget, if there is no tax increase, and we'll talk about tax increase later. You know, it's up to the board, uh, but that would bring down your net assignments for to five point two one seven million. Um, our unassigned fund balance, which is a six point seven percent, uh, which would end up being six point three nine percent because of the higher, uh, expenditures this coming year, uh, would be five point two million. Uh, I always look at your assigned and unassigned because that's what you have to spend. Um, if we keep on deficit spending, and that's one of the reasons you hired me for, is to get get the down that we, uh, break even with revenue expenditures, um, you're gonna run out in about five years. And then you will not be able to catch up because you're not gonna be able to increase taxes to make that the difference. So at that time, if you don't want, you know, you're not gonna be able to maintain the same programs. You're not gonna be able to maintain the same now teachers, or you're gonna have to increase class size. And I don't think you want to do either of those, but like I said before, I don't vote. So what I I am presenting a budget here is status quo. Um, if you want to go to the next page, Joe? Pie chart. Uh, one thing to note, um, most of our revenue comes from local sources, real estate taxes, uh, local fees. Uh, only thirty percent of our revenue comes from state sources and roughly three percent from federal. Uh, the state sources is the special education funding, the Ready to Learn Grant, and the basic education funding. Uh, there's a lawsuit going on now about the state not, uh, funding districts the way they should. Uh, we'll see what that comes out. And if, you know, if they win, it'll be a year or two that that comes out. But right now, sixty eight percent of our revenue is off our taxpayers.
Mr. Feig, for the state, um, revenue for the current budget that you're using, since we're waiting for the state budget, are you just using last year's?
I'm using a three percent increase.
With a, okay, just a three percent projection then?
I I I I think I'm safe with that.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't think I'm safe with the budget's request, the governor's request of eighteen percent. You know, they didn't give it to him last time. They gave him two and a half percent. Uh, I think this time with the surplus they had that they didn't think they would have because of COVID, I think they'll go three percent. I I'd love to see a little bit more, but if you look at it, it's only thirty percent of the budget, our budget. So, you know, a three percent increase might talk to us maybe one and a quarter percent savings on taxes.
Brian, Brian, when does the state clarify, you know, how much they're gonna be funding schools?
They they, we have to have our budget by June thirtieth. They've gone past July a year before. Uh, I, from what I'm hearing from PASB and P S B A, and I'm also in the PASB Legislative Committee, they want to try and have something knocked out by the middle of Jan or, uh, middle of June. So hopefully between the time we have to advertise a preliminary budget and adopt a budget, we have to advertise a a preliminary budget for the public to review for twenty days, uh, prior to adopting the budget. So if we look at our June meeting, we go thirty days before to, or twenty days before to a previous meeting to adopt a preliminary budget, we can still make changes during that time. So we're gonna be adopting a budget sometime at the end of May, and then, uh, a preliminary budget and approving or finalizing the budget at the June meeting. Hopefully in that time, we will know the 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 state will approve the budget. Uh, we probably will have an idea where it's gonna be by mid-May. You know, uh, and I think what what we're gonna know is they're not gonna give all the extra money that he wanted. Uh, and they're not gonna have charter school reform, but they're they're willing to go with three or four percent increase. Um, if, will you wait for the next pie chart? I actually have two different pie charts. I want to, um, a little bit further, Joe?
Mr. Feig, would you be able to move the mic a little bit closer?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, so so basically, um, our accounting system, we had fund, which is general fund, which is what you're you're, uh, looking at right now. Function, which is basically your programs, your regular education, your special education, your, um, community services, people trans station's, plant maintenance. Uh, so I broke a pie chart down and by program or by function, if you want to call it that. Forty percent of our funds go towards regular education. Another seventeen percent goes towards, uh, special education and ten percent to debt service. That's our major expenditures right there. Um, if we want to go to the next one, uh, I believe that would be plant maintenance services. That would be all of our our gas, our electric, uh, cleaning the buildings, our custodians. You know, everything it costs to run the district. If you go to my department, business services, 1%, pupil health services, 1%. Administrative services, which should be your principals, all your other administrators, 5%. Instructional staff services, which should be the staff underneath everyone, 3%. The next pie chart is probably the one we really want to look at and understand. The majority of our expenditures, salaries, 42%, benefits, 29%. We're at 70, 71% total in benefits and salaries. Professional services, 4%. Debt services, 10% again. Other purchase services, 7%. This could be anywhere from your psychologist or special ed. If we hire a landscaper to treat the lawns, if we hire a plumber to, to work on, on something. Purchased property services. Things that maintain the building, supplies, 4%. Now, and supplies that also, for some reason gasoline, electric and those things are on their supplies.
Mr. Pike, do you know how much of the benefits portion is mandated PESR's cost?
PESR's cost this coming year is going to be 30. I'll give you the exact number because it had, it went up almost a percent. 35 point. 35.26%. And within five years, at least what they're projecting unless the rates go up, which, which will be a good thing if interest rates go up. It's supposed to go up to about 39% and stop and then eventually go back down. And, you know, I've gotten in arguments with, with the state senators on, on this. They'd say we, you know, the state, why should they be bailing out the pension fund? And my answer is, well, I was in private industry out of 401K and I invested wherever I wanted. If I lost, it was my fault. But here you make the employees take out 7.65% of their pay. You invested and they have no say on that. That's why the states, you know, is trying to bail it out. They did change the pension plan, which I think in 20 years it'll, it'll finally even it out. And, you know, it does bail it out in 20 years, but not overnight.
Yeah, I believe newer employees are paying in a larger percentage.
They're paying a larger percentage and it's only defined benefit plan up to the first 50,000. After that, the money goes into a 401 type K plan and that they do have a choice where to invest. So I think Mr. Hamburger, if you want to go to the next page, had asked me to do a comparison between previous years and this year. As I said, salaries, 41.99, benefits, 28.77. Change in salaries from last year to this year, 821,000. Change in benefits from last year to this year, 396,000. Purchased services are up 664,000. Supplies up 206,000. Property expenses up 325,000. Now, debt service slash reserve is down 1.3 million. That's because last year we knew we were getting Esser, but we didn't know what lines we were going to put it to. So I put it in the budgetary reserve. This year I actually put it into, into the lines in the, in the budget. So I can tell you, most of that is going into the purchased property services and other purchase services and salaries. We had, I think, 450,000, if you remember from the Esser three sheet was for salaries, which is three people's salaries and benefits.
Mr. Pike, can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
I mean, do any of these expenses reflect the impact of Esser? I mean, are they artificially inflated because of the Esser funds that were used?
There is, I don't want to call it artificially inflated. The only thing that, that is going to drop that we're, we're probably going to keep are the three employees for the ESL, the pension specialists. And I, I think, or it could change because it's a different superintendent. But the reasoning was in three years we'd have people retiring that we can put them back into the what you call teaching force.
Yeah, but I guess my question is, I mean, haven't you kept Esser separate from the, this allocation? I mean, when you talk about supplies, you know, this past year and what we purchased as a result of what we were able to get through Esser.
Right.
Is that included in this analysis?
The Esser is included in this analysis, yes.
Okay.
And the only, and when I showed you on the sheet, I was looking at one times. You know, buying all the equipment they need for the cyber school next year so they don't have to worry about it for two or three or four years. You know, I was not looking at paying for something that we'd have to pay again the following year and not having money. Because once you give something, it's hard to take it back. So I was looking, you know, I use the falling off the cliff, but it's, it's one time money. And if you add additional services and you can't support that next year, it's going to look bad.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I think, like you said before, that's what, you know, PDE cautions districts not to incorporate this into anything that has a long term.
So I looked at, I looked at things like, you know, we can get down to the one to one, all the way down to kindergarten. You know, buy all the equipment we need now, use, that's what we're used, Esser, buy the laptop. This past year, I think we were looking at the servers, which could be a 10 year investment. You know, those types of things that are long term, it's not going to have to be used again next year. Like I said, the only three things that will drop off are those three positions. But we felt that those three positions could be absorbed into attrition from other positions in those years. And we know, you know, normal year you'd have 10 to 12 teachers retiring. You know, this year we had 35, 40, somewhere around there. But when you get back to normal, those three positions will probably be absorbed into retiring position. So you want to get back to the meat? Let's go to the last page.
Well, I just wondered, I, I had a question about, you know, there are a couple of areas that really stood out to me as I'm looking under function on that same page.
Right.
You know, and I'm looking at two of the big items there, which are special education and pupil services. And I know that's Dawn's area of concentration requirement. I know you have many, many, it's a complicated budget and, and there's a lot in it, right? It just seems like, you know, I'm seeing that change as being fairly significant change from this year to next year. And I'm just wondering if there's some way you can characterize, I mean, we're not looking at the entire budget and that we don't see all the, you know, different, you know, component parts of the pupil services and special ed budget. What's, what's driving the big increases this, this coming year?
Can I jump on, on that real fast? At the, the very bottom where I have the Esser allocated, the salaries, benefits and purchase services. 400 and some thousand is under Dawn's budget for the Esser three salaries. So that's, that's part of the increase. Last year we just had as a budgetary reserve because we didn't know where we're going to put it.
Is that under the pupil services?
Yeah, if you look, if you look down at line 5900 budgetary reserve, that's a minus 1.3 million. So if you take that up to 2100 pupil services and also 1200 special ed programs, that's where that money went this year.
That covers it, yeah. Yeah, that just, that totally covers it.
It's this year we knew exactly where, where last year at budget time they came, I think it was last March or April. They, they came out with Esser three and said, hey, you're getting 3.1 million. But they didn't, you know, come out with what you can spend it on into July, August. So I knew it was coming there. That would be a three year. So I put it in a budgetary reserve. You know, knowing that we'd have it to spend that year, but we had allocate during.
I'm glad you said that because I mean, outside, you know, without that Esser component, that would have been a fairly dramatic annual increase in that area. So thank you.
Dawn wouldn't have done that to me.
Good. My hope is restored.
But that's why I put the asterisk down below and that, you know, the debt service reserve and, and reserved down there.
Outside of our Exeter budget, Dr. Hamburger, some trends in rising costs in special education, just in general, to answer that part of the question, that all districts are kind of experiencing and seeing. So that's where increases in mental health placements get absorbed in that cost. And gosh, I think you guys have heard enough of all of us talking, you know, nationwide about the increase in needs for mental health placements for students. So that's an area that I know for sure districts have been impacted by. And then increased costs from those placements, right? So they have experienced inflation as well. They're raising the costs of their services and their tuitions. So that's been a, a big impact on special education budgets. Additionally, there's a lot of students being referred for special education as a result of the pandemic. Tom Warner, our solicitor from Sweet Stevens, that is our special ed council was here today doing a training and we were having some conversation with our school psychologists. And across the board, again, districts experiencing those increased referrals and thus increased numbers of students in special education, which then leads to all the other costs of additional staffing and, and that type of thing.
One thing I also wanted to mention. The savings we received from taking away Laura life and putting in her own program pretty much took care of the increases she would have had.
Yeah. Are, 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 are staff costs, salaries, benefits included in your, your portion of the budget? Or is that under a, a different area? Is that under personnel? Is it under salaries and benefits? I mean, did you break that?
But, but we have that broken down. I think you have one sheet that's a long, did I give you that? Yeah. I don't have that on, on the board because it won't fit there. But if you look at the 1200, you can see salaries, benefits all the way through for each department.
But it's, it's segregated by?
By special education, vocational programs. I mean, her salaries, special ed programs, including teachers, 5.1 million, benefits, 4.1 million. You know, professional services, 2.1. Property service, very low, 2,000. Purchase services, 2.3. Supplies, 183,000.
I have a question. Sorry, maybe for Dawn. So when he explained how yours increased and the Essers covered it, do you see this? I mean, Esser runs out in three years. What do you, do you see that we're going to be slapped with the, with the need for quite a bit more? Like, we might actually see this in three years because it's covered by Esser now, but in three years it won't be?
As Dr. Hamburger said, special education is a very complicated budget. So it's very difficult to predict what students' needs will be in terms particularly of out of district placements. It's difficult to predict what enrollment will be, right? So you could, I've had the experience where I've gotten, at the start of a school year, you know, families that have moved in and all of a sudden I have six students who require multiple disability support and one-on-one aids that we had no idea were coming. So in that sense, it's kind of hard for me to sit here and predict to you, you know, exactly what that's going to look like in three years. Thanks.
Cyber school enrollment, do you have numbers on that, what that looks like, not, not ours, but externally?
I can tell you it has not increased with us. And during a pandemic, we did not increase. Most districts increased by 40, 50% because we had our own cyber academy. We stayed the same. I, I think Dan was getting information for Mr. Fiddler before.
I'm going to say off the cuff numbers. I'm going to say we're at about 89 out of district cyber schools and about 150 in our own cyber academy.
What's interesting, we actually have more homeschool than we have in our district cyber schools.
And are we working towards getting those cyber school students either? Like, do you know, I mean, because I think that this was still a transition year, right? So people really weren't sure what, what the program was going to look like. Are, are we expecting some of those private charter school students to come back? Or are we going to bring some of those into our own district organic model?
Yeah, we're, we're always working to bring some of the, as all school districts do, work to bring the outside cyber charter school students into the district. And some, you can, you can move a couple, but some are in there for very personal philosophical reasons. And so, you know, they, they wouldn't be moving out, but we keep an eye on that. We keep an eye on, I, I tell you where we need to keep the eye on is the residency issue. To make sure that they're still living within our district as we're paying tuition for an outside cyber school. Because sometimes people move, they don't even think about the fact that if their school kids are in cyber, they don't really think about the fact that they need to, you know, report that as a, as a change in residency. So we do try to keep an eye on that. All school districts do and they follow up on that. So that's just kind of something we keep circling back to, I think. I think we, we kind of check on those pieces more often than not. But every once in a while then we do for our cyber academy, do kind of like a little promotional letter out there or postcard out there to try to get folks back in.
Is the district still utilizing a firm to do those investigations in terms of residency? I remember there was an approval a few years ago.
Not, not that I know of, but Dawn?
I am the firm, Mr. Hamburger.
You are the firm.
That's one of the, one of those hats I wear on the firm.
Yeah, I, I can't recall what the, what the company was, but there, there was some type of investigation company that, that was enlisted maybe a year or two ago to do those. I don't know if there was any cost savings there, but potentially.
If you find one student, it's $12,000 or 13,000 for regular ed and 26,000 for special ed. So there's definitely cost savings.
But I would just say there's a cost savings if you get it right.
Correct. Any other questions here before I get to the meat? Joe, can you go to the last page, please? Okay, just want to reiterate, we started the 21, 22 year budget with a 1.677, 223 deficit. And that was after increase in taxes, 1.75%. The preliminary budget as it stands right now has a 2.165 million deficit without a tax increase. Revenues are up 1.41%, state revenue up 3%. That's my estimate on the budget where it's going to stand. I'd probably put a nickel bet on that, but, you know, I, I think we're probably going to get 3%. Local is up 0.8% and that's increased collections from 98.6% to 99.2%. Expenditures are up 1.99%. And that includes where I think all salaries will end up being with the contracts. You know, there's, where we are now has that in there. You know, one thing I wanted to mention, we, in custodial supplies, love the economy go back down. But, you know, anything from toilet paper to paper, even our, our copy paper. The bids came in this year, $38 a case. Last year we were paying $22 a case. Toilet paper is almost double. Hopefully that'll go back down. Paper towels are, are double. Gasoline went from, we, we pay pre-tax from like, I think gasoline was 198 and that was 408. Thursday, we get the fuel bids in for next year. Now that 408 was a maximum, okay? Though they, they won't give us a guarantee for the whole year. They'll give us a maximum now. Our diesel, last year's bid and we're paying up to, right now we're still paying. Our diesel, last year's bid, and we're paying up to, right now, we're still paying a dollar sixty-eight a gallon because we pay the the pre-tax price. Thursday, we'll know what the fuel consumption or fuel bids will come in at. Right now, I have about a fifty percent increase. I'm hoping to stay that. Propane, that almost doubled. But hopefully, things will go back down. But this has the cost of living increase and the CPI index for all the supplies purchased for the maintenance department. This budget maintains the current staff level. There's no employee cuts. It maintains the same programs. It maintains the same staffing. If you want, we can look at reducing staff. We can look at increasing class size. I didn't think you want to, so that's, I'm maintaining the status quo. I include the activity fee for students this year. We also have the deduction for the firefighter's tax credit. You know, I'm assuming the student count's going to be level. When I look at the live birth rates that the state puts out and everything, you know, I don't see us decreasing in student count. I also do not see us increasing. I do see developments coming in, but they're large houses. So usually what happens, you have, you have people that have kids graduate, become empty nesters. You have new people that come in that have students, but it maintains the status quo at the same level. So I don't see any any real changes in in student counts. Next couple of years, I'm hoping to see a residential increase in assessment. I'm also hoping to start seeing some commercial increases in assessments. There's properties that could get back on the tax rolls or rebuilt. Last thing I heard from the township is they're going to put the promenade up for sale. They went for an assessment decrease when they tore the building down to, I think it's four hundred and sixty thousand. But any type of improvement there will will increase it. So hopefully, that'll that'll be there. What I'm asking for right now, I'm not, you know, our index is four point five percent. That index will wipe out our deficit, but I'm not asking for that. I'm asking for a two point five percent tax increase. That would cut the deficit nine hundred eighty-three thousand. You know, our goal is within three years to to break even. If we don't have a tax increase next year, I think you're going to have a lot of higher increase. You have to start cutting services. But it's something that we can talk about or or keep ongoing and see where we want to be. That's my recommendation, but, you know, you're the board. You have to decide. But if we don't have an increase, there's going to be somewhere down the road, we're going to have to cut services. And the wells is slowly drying up. Questions?
Brian.
Yeah.
In the next report, we have a combination, I think it's seven retirements and resignations for the for this month. Do we have a position as a district on what we do about those? I mean, I can remember back to my corporate days when people would retire, they retired. That position was eliminated. When people resigned, unless it was the CEO or the CFO or something like that, same thing, you eliminate a position, people would double up, triple up sometimes.
Let Dr. Em, may I clear that? But every position that comes through, I look at. Yes, do we need it? And like I said, in this budget, I'm maintaining current staff. I'm hoping that those positions, we hire someone lower in the step. But with the job market, employment market with teachers, right now, we end up hiring people from other districts that are already at that step or or close to it. There's not that many young teachers, I don't want to say young, inexperienced teachers coming out of college that we can hire at the at the bottom. I'd love to see that as a business manager, but you also want to hire the best people here for your students. I guess, Dr. Em, you want to address that?
I can't ask, add too much to what what Brian has said is that every time there is an opening, we evaluate, you know, we evaluate that position to see the necessity. You know, a third grade teacher retires, you can't just eliminate a third grade teaching position. I mean, I guess you could, but then you'd have very large class sizes, right? So we, but we do evaluate every position. We look at numbers. We look at incoming enrollments. We look at the needs. Christie's actually smiling at me because it's what we've been doing over the past two weeks. Have been looking at staffing and staffing and staffing. And if there's an opening somewhere, can somebody else be moved and, you know, to trying to keep it all even? It's a, it's actually work to keep the, no, no increase in staffing is actually a little bit of work. Brian's also correct in that at one point in time, we would often be able to say, well, with the retirement, we'd be able to, we're going to be able to save like half the salary and benefits amount. We can't guarantee that anymore because of the shortage of staff and the shortage of teachers coming out of school with certifications. Some areas, it's easier, elementary teachers, obviously, it's easier than if you have a tech ed teacher, high school math teacher, a special ed teacher. Those are, those are tougher to hire, so we can't guarantee that there's necessarily going to be a lot of savings. With retirements, we get some savings on that. But Brian works those into the numbers, too.
When I was living in New Jersey, I was on the board of a local symphony orchestra and we were having money problems, even twenty-five years ago, having money problems. And we considered becoming a chamber orchestra. Are we looking at things like that here instead of having the marching band that we have, smaller marching band? Instead of having the music programs that we have, smaller. I'm I'm looking for opportunities for us to cut so that we can not have a two point five percent tax increase, but maybe a one point two five percent tax increase and generate the rest by tax cuts.
And I agree that we're, and and we're trying to do the same. I I can't say that we've looked at cutting music programs. You know, if you think you've had a lot of people here before, if you try to cut a music program, you're going to have even more, even more people here. So I don't think we're going to try to look at that. And and I I've been at schools where they've wanted to increase their band because, you know, it was getting so. I don't know that those are the places that we want to go. But we do definitely, and that's why, that's why this is preliminary. We we definitely do look at everything as we're going through this and we'll continue over the next month or so to continue to look at that. But unless, you know, somebody wants to make a kind of a big statement to be looking at, you know, starting to cut some of those extracurriculars, we're not looking to do that right now.
Two years ago, we had a series of public meetings. It was advertised as six. By the time we got to the third one, four people were showing up. So we didn't have the last two or three. But I remember sitting at a table, talking about the budget and asking the eight or ten people going right around the table, what would you cut? Well, we don't want to cut anything. Okay, so we're going to have to raise taxes, whatever, two point. Well, no, we don't want you to raise taxes. So what do we do? What does this board do? Very easy to say, yes, we'll tax people two, two and a half percent more. Then you'll see people show up at this, at this meeting.
Sure. And if if you have, you know, I think that's been the age old question and why this is one of the toughest jobs that the board can do is try to balance the the fiscal responsibility with the quality of the programs that we're offering the students. And that's why we have to look at it all very carefully. But, you know, there is no magic goal in answer to that. And that's why we got to keep digging and keep looking every place that we can. And sometimes some hard decisions have to be made and some hard recommendations have to be made. We're not at that point yet in April. May or June, we will be.
I mean, I'm also looking at other things for future. I know Dr. Hamburger knows this, you know, last meeting, we presented the solar farm. They asked me to go back and talk to the people. I'm actually meeting with them on site to see if we can expand that, that we can cover a hundred and ten percent of our electric and that could save us, you know, several hundred thousand easily a year. But that's not going to happen overnight. But things like that, we have, we have to look for long term. And that's why I even talked about ESSER, you'd need to, I I can give you everything that you want right now, but are you going to be able to sustain it next year? And that's my concern. That's what I have to give you, you know. And it's up to you to decide if you want to tackle again next year or tackle it this year. I'm I'm one that doesn't like to kick things down the road.
So I I know last year, prior to me joining the board, it was presented as a three-year plan that we were going to eliminate the structural deficit. So the, the suggestion was the one point seven five four percent tax increase was going to help get us there. But what we're seeing here looks like we're going in the opposite direction, though. So I I guess my concern is, even if we do this two point five percent, I feel like next year, if we don't change something, it seems like we're going to continue on this path. Are we like really going to get rid of that structural deficit?
Oh, that's one of the things I brought up, the solar farm. If we can get a hundred percent electricity, it's four or five hundred thousand dollars knocked right off there, plus ten percent selling back every year. You know, we we had talked before, and I I know this is not the right time to do it, but there's scheduling changes that can be made that could save employees and not have to replace some attrition. But that's a long term. That's a two-year process to look at that.
Sorry, I just want to throw in, and we don't know really how many positions that would actually eliminate. There was no definite piece on that.
Do we, are we collecting taxes from the Target shopping center yet?
Yes.
And when did that start? Didn't they get a?
It's the TIF. The TIF ends in twenty twenty-seven. That's the.
That was a portion, but I think they are, didn't it, Chairman know this, didn't they go in for an assessment change already?
I don't, I don't know that the Target did.
But they they pulled it back.
Yeah.
Or Giant, one of those.
It was Giant. It wasn't Target.
Yeah.
We never did give up all of those taxes. We maintained, I believe it was seventy-five percent. We gave up twenty-five percent of those taxes.
Yeah, it wasn't a hundred percent. I know that.
Yeah. And whereas the township gave up the whole thing, but.
Yeah, the, I I mean, the other thing that I was kind of alluding to earlier was the debt service. From my understanding is that we, we have a pretty short timeframe or short financing window that we do here versus maybe some other school districts stretch that out a little bit more. And it sounds like there would be a a good amount of funds coming back to us, starting, you know, starting around that twenty twenty-six, where should we have to increase taxes potentially at that time, we would start potentially even being able to decrease taxes once the debt service is starting to get paid off.
I I agree with that. Twenty twenty-six, you basically, the money that was geared towards debt service could now go towards general fund and you wouldn't have to have an increase that year. We're talking a ten percent increase over a four-year period of, or decrease in expenditures over a four-year period then.
Because that's a total eight, eight to nine million dollars, I believe.
It's eight point nine million.
Yeah, eight point nine, yeah.
Yeah.
So we have to do something until at least then.
Again, though, I think it was explained by the auditor that that's under the presumption that there isn't any major repair or necessity on our facilities that that needs to be done, that's going to take on a new debt service. I don't, I also don't want to be under the presumption that we're going to be getting money in and then, you know, another board's going to be sitting here in five years saying, well, we had to spend that money and now we don't have it. I think we have to look at the money that we're spending now and look at how we're spending it before we make presumptions about five years from now. One of the things I was curious about is each individual department creates their own budget. Is that correct?
Correct.
So I guess one of my questions is, I mean, I'm sure that there's, they have some liberties within those departments of how they create that budget, and that budget doesn't include salaries. And that's pretty much a, you know, a needs budget.
Right.
You know, i- if you have peanut butter spread it, so if you, if you kind of said, you know, we want every department to take a look and cut whatever that number looks like to us, three percent out of their budget, is that something that every department could go back and look at and find out where their, you know, what what's, what's the needs and what's the wants?
We could easily do that. I would sit down to make sure it's real, realistic. You know, when I give a department their budget, I give them the last three years' history, you know, what they actually spent, this past year's budget. And I ask them to fill in this year's budget. If I see a difference between any of those, I I question. Like I said, with the, they call it a capital request, but to me, it's maintenance requests for like the cafeteria tables at the high school and the junior high. You know, I I still have to go out and look at them and really see, do we need, you know, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a cafeteria table between the two? Or can we, you know, put those in over a two-year period? And I, you know, I'm not a hundred percent sure if that's a want or or need yet. You know, those types of things. But most of the other things I've looked at, history to what they've requested. So I haven't seen anything out of the ordinary. Like I did say, the maintenance department on supplies, he basically used the CPI index, which is seven point six two percent on supplies. I've seen them double already, but I think they'll be coming back down. Hoping that's a good number. Maybe it's a little bit high. But before I ask him to to cut, I want to be certain that he's not cutting and then come back and overspend. Or we don't have toilet paper to end the next year. There's still work to be done. I I personally think I can get the down below two million right now. I'd love to see more from the state, but I don't think we're going to see that much more from the state.
Yeah, Brian, I I kind of think we may get some more from the state. It's just my feeling this year because I think the state is in in the best financial, you know, situation they've been in for a long time.
Just had additional five hundred and eighty million, I think I read today, in revenue, unexpected revenue.
Because and because, and also the the infusion of federal dollars. So I mean, it it seems as if there's some interest, I think, on the part of legislature to to consider, you know, maybe increasing the funding for public education, taking the burden off the global.
My 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 concern knows that from past history, most of that extra money they also find goes to needy districts, and they don't think ESSER is a needy district.
Well, then they, they're using the fair funding formula
Yeah.
for, you know, any new money, then that would be a disadvantage for Exeter because we're not considered to be an at, an at, in a need district.
I mean, I I use the example, the ESSER funds. So we we basically have four million dollars in TOWS or somewhere around there. Reading had a hundred and seventy-nine million. They have four times the amount of students we have. So, you know, I'm hoping, I'd love to see more, but usually when they have extra money like that, it goes towards need, not not equally spread out. But I'm hoping wrong.
The last question I had was, you know, it seems like each year, the administration would come to the business manager and the superintendent and say, this is our wish list in terms of, let's say, staffing requests. Have have you gone through that process already? I mean, you and.
We have no wish lists.
There's no, so there's no, there's no wish list to say no to them.
Dr. Em, before you were here, there was maybe five requests and all of them were denied for additional staff. And I, I think Christie can answer which ones they were.
We had multiple requests for additional specialists as well as for intervention support. And at this time, based on the the number of staff that we added last year with the addition of specialists as well as the number of ESL teachers and intervention supports, we feel as though we were appropriately staffed.
And we scaled back a significant number of, I think, our support staff as a result of of, part of it was part of COVID.
Yeah.
You know, but those folks, many of those folks weren't rehired. Were there some savings associated with that?
That's why I didn't have a three point one million dollar deficit last year, which you had the previous year. You only had a one point six million dollar deficit. If you remember, when I came here, that I was working on the budget, the nineteen twenty budget had a three point two million dollar deficit or use of fund balance. 1920 budget had a $3.2 million deficit or use of fund balances. And with what we started scaling back immediately, uh, what you saw in the audit, we only used 2 million of fund balances instead of 3 million. So it did save a lot.
Brian, as we move through this, I'm wondering if if you would be able to, I mean, you put down 2.5% increase would cut by
What I'm trying to do is cut it by half and half and then down.
Yeah, I guess my question is, I mean, if if there would be, would it be possible to kind of lay out a couple other scenarios?
I have lots of scenarios.
Yeah, but I mean, so if you said a, you know, 2.0, a 2.0 tax increase would result in a deficit reduction or 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 still a, you know, you know, still a, um, a deficit of, let's say, you know, uh, 1.2 million. So it would be nice to see some of the different ones, not necessarily tonight, but I mean
I have it right here.
As 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 we go through this process, it would be good to know.
That could be some options to, that we, you can see in May, then.
Yeah, we
Could see some different options then for
It would give us a better sense of if we have to settle in on a tax increase, what
Every 1% is $473,000.
Ev- every one
1% is $473,000, so 2% would be $946,000.
Okay.
So, um, Mr. Feig, you had mentioned some, uh, increased revenue potentially by, uh, assessment changes you had mentioned there?
I I'm hoping we'll see that in the following year and the following years, because I I've been driving around. I mean, there's development over, uh, on the outside of Watten. They're they're actually going right up against the gun club, new houses there. There's several developments that are are building that should have been built years ago that were stopped from COVID, now they're building again. Mostly single-family homes, so I I see that increase in assessment. I don't see that increasing student count, because students graduate, you have empty nesters, and you have new people come in with students, so so I don't see us decreasing in the live birth rates and everything else from the county and the the state show us maintaining. So, uh, the assessment will help offset, you know, higher assessment for more tax for the same mileage.
So so Exeter has the third highest tax rate in in Brooks, and it's been that way for for at least 10 years. You know, I I think the tax increases over the past 10 years have been a lot lower than they were in the 2000s. You know, when we were talking about even going into double digits. The district in terms of expenditures, they're 13th place out of 18, uh, in per-people costs. But I would like to see if, um, you know, there is some way or some other way to increase revenue that we haven't maybe explored yet. You know, with, uh, Walmart, um, there was Walmart, there was a few other corporations, Exeter Commons even, that had gone and and sought reassessments. Um, and we had, we had lost revenue from those. And, you know, Exeter's typically a bedroom community. And in ultimately, we have properties that are also off the tax rolls, too. So I I don't know what we could do there. Obviously, taxing is our main source of of income, but I I don't know if there's any non-traditional ways that we could bring in revenue.
There's always fees, you know?
Yeah.
I I personally, I don't like fees, I don't like charging students, I don't want charging organizations, because most people are already paying taxes. So they should use the facilities, but you can always raise the fees if you want. You know, but are we talking 40, 50,000 dollars extra?
Yeah, yeah, when you're talking in terms of that
I know every year I talk about getting rid of the student activity fee, but 70,000 you have to make up.
Yeah.
You know?
Um, Brian, another question. For the benefit of, uh, new board members, uh, new members of the public, and even those of us board members who've been through this twice already, I have an easier time deciphering Philip Glass's music than I do the concept of these, uh, these fund balances.
All right.
Why not, what if somebody were to say, well, why not just take a million dollars from the fund balance and offset any proposed tax increase?
That'd be 2 million, I'm asking you to take a million. Because next year, you're going to still have that $2 million to make up in the budget next year and the year after that, and it just compounds itself, you know, what, you know. You asked me when I was hired, you you, your choice was to get down to expenditures and revenue neutral. I'm trying to get down there. But as long as you're around Peter to pay Paul, that well's going to end up, you know, dry out. And that's why, one of the first slide I showed you was the, uh, assigned fund balance that you have to use for future years' budget deficit. And that's going to, you know, we dropped 2 million last year, which, you know, I'm asking you to only drop a million this year and get it down to that that we're not hitting the well that could dry out. So.
There a school district somewhere in the Allentown area that used so much of its fund balance that something terrible happened? Am I, did I have a bad dream, or is that, did that actually happen?
There's been many districts that have done that, where this, you know, that basically they ended up laying off people because they couldn't even make payroll. You know, now, now, there's a difference between fund balance and cash. And GFOA says you should have at least 20%. The state says you're not allowed to have more than 8% unreserved or that they can use for anything. You can reserve things for like, like you have here, we reserve it for future deficits, but that keeps on going down. As Chris Herr, the auditor, said, you know, uh, our fund, unreserved fund balance right now is 20 days of of bills. Luckily, we have taxpayers that start paying their bill the day they get it, in July. In certain districts, when they send out their their bills, they don't get their tax bills until August or September. If the state does not pass a budget and does not start subsidizing that district, they have no cash to even pay their payroll. And that's what the problem, I think you're talking about, is they went negative, they had no cash to pay payroll, they had to go borrow from the bank.
So it was a bad dream and reality.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So just for my clarity, if we pass a budget in June, let's hypothetically say we pass this budget you presented today, and the state doesn't pass their budget until July. And let's just say the state, you have budgeted in here at 3% from the state, and the state winds up giving us 6%. So that's about another $615,000.
Right.
Are we able to adjust that into the tax, like to drop it down, you know, to to make up for that?
I I think you have 15 days, and Sharon, you can, it's like 15 days from the state adoption to reopen your budget, redo it. I think the, you know, that's in PDE code. Municipal code has something else, I think the township reopened their budget after they had one. But am I correct, is 15 days or 20?
No, I think it's 15 days after the state identifies what you're, what they're going to give you. Now, I'm, I have to look into making, if you've already issued a tax increase. Right, right.
Like if the bills are already done and out, that's a little bit more difficult to backtrack on that.
Right, because a few years, thankfully, a few years by now, um, when the state was really, really late in getting their their payments even identified for school districts, everybody had to move forward with everything. Um, and then that's when they allowed, they allowed school district to then reopen their budgets to make adjustments. But I don't think that any tax increases were subsequently reduced at the local level, because it was said and done already.
So there's essentially no way if we get X amount of dollars more than expected, later than expected, to credit our taxpayers to that?
I wouldn't say that there's no way, I mean, there may be some way to do a tax credit versus, you know, you you have to pay your tax bill, it is what it is, and then there may be some creative way to to refund or or credit taxpayers. I don't know, and I'm not suggesting that there is or isn't right now. But certainly, that's that's more of an option. What I'm saying is you probably can't, after the fact, um, lower your tax rate.
Thank you.
Yeah, what what I think you could do, and I think this happened once before, I'm trying to think what district it was, they withheld sending out their tax bills, and then they changed the due dates once they did send them out.
Yeah, I've heard, I've, I haven't heard that they, anybody withholding their tax bills, because I think that's statutory as well, but, um, changing the due dates.
Change it, okay, change the due dates, yeah.
Brian, just a quick question, too. Is there any, I know we got, we did, we were able to get significant relief by restructuring some debt previously, and I heard Chris Hess talk about it earlier this evening. Is there any possibility that we could go in and take a look at, you know, our our current debt and and change any of the terms that would benefit it?
I've asked, and basically, your fees would eat up what what would save right now. Now, because we do have the 2017 can be refunded and reworked. Talking to Jamie Schlesinger from PFM, you know, he said, the only way I'd even you know, present that to your board is if they're looking for additional money, because it's not worth, you know, going out, because your rates are, you're, are starting to increase right now.
So if we were looking for to incur more debt, we we might get
Yeah, because then you'd say, you know, maybe go out 10 years instead of eight, you know, but, uh,
Yeah.
Right now, there's no room. He says about $100 savings, and by the time the bond council, the underwriting fees, it's going to be all eaten up.
Okay.
I did look into that. And I did look into about extending the debt, and he said, that's not worth it either. Because you're just going to pay more interest, and, you know, you might save a couple hundred thousand here, but in the long term, you're going to spend twice as much as you would have saved. Next, anything else, or? Come back in
I'm free to move on.
May with some final numbers and more discussion.
So in, uh, in the meantime, uh, Mr. Feig administration will be looking at other areas to see where we could reduce costs? Moving on to item B, the 2022-23 Burke's Career and Technology Center Proposed Operating Budget. The proportionate share of the cost for the fiscal year is $1,118,959. Uh, Jason, do we know how much that was, uh, previous year? I do not know that figure off the top of my head, I don't know.
Give him a second.
And while we're waiting for that, Mr. Campbell, do we have a number of BCTC students?
Typically have, uh, doing numbers in the 110s, 120s. Next year, we currently have 124 students that are enrolled to attend there. That'll fluctuate a little bit as applications are still being processed.
Is this similar to BCIU where we're approving the whole budget? Or is this, or are these dollars dollars that we are actually contributing to BCTC?
Uh, the million one, I believe, is our por- our portion of that.
That's correct.
Right? Yep. The whole budget is probably what is it, 20? 20.3?
20, uh, yeah, it's on page four, 20,312,270. It's a 3.23 increase, 3.23% increase. Additional $634,889 over last year's budget.
Yeah, last year, we spent $1,053,706.
Thank you. Any other discussion on item B? Okay, moving on to item C, audit of tax collector, Exeter Township, Exeter Township School District. We have a report here prepared by Reinsel, Kuntz, and Lesher for the year ending December 31st, 2020. Any questions? Dr. Hearing, that's it for my report.
Mr. Mel?
Oh, yes.
Uh, to go to the voting meeting, there'll also be that we accept the order from Malley Falconer. We put that up in the front, we forgot to put that as a motion.
To, um, I'm sorry, say that one more time, Mr. Feig.
Mr. Herr, um, presented the 2021 audit, but the board has to officially accept that, so it becomes public knowledge.
We need to move that to the voting agenda.
Correct.
Thank you. Dr. Hearing, that is it for my committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Mel and Mr. Feig, appreciate all that information. Next to Personnel Committee, Mr. Morgan, please.
Yes, the board will be, uh, there'll be a recommendation from the Board of Directors for resignations, retirements, appointments, change of status, leaves of absence, and course requests. And just want to remind the board that all of these things are subject to change as anything may, anything happens over the next two weeks. So you may see some additions or subtractions based on on what happens over the next couple of weeks with, if there's any more resignations or anything of that.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Yep.
Policy Committee, Dr. Hamburger.
Next, Dr. Hearing, um, two policies, uh, on the agenda for the voting meeting. Both of these have been reviewed, uh, by the committee the whole. Both have gone through first-level, um, readings and have been approved for first level. One is the threat assessment, uh, policy 236.1, and the other is policy 805, emergency preparedness and response. There's also, uh, safe-to-safe procedures, which is a sort of a, an additional, like an addendum to the, I think it's an addendum to the emergency, uh, preparedness and response. Does anybody have any questions about those policies? They've been discussed and reviewed previously.
I do, and this is probably the first time since you took this job over, I've ever made a comment. But, uh, and I swore I was going to be quiet tonight. The threat assessment, uh, policy, uh, I thought you've set up a good structure there, and I went through it three times, and not once in there is there a report to the board. Now, we can trust that our superintendent in place will share the, uh, news with us when things are come up. But there have been times in my life where Joe Smith came up to me and said, hey, how comes my kid, whatever? And I feel that it is, if we are to represent the people of this township, I feel we have the obligation to give them answers. Now, I recognize the privacy, uh, considerations and everything else, but if a guy comes up and says, my son got beat up in the hall, which I have tapes of, I, and, uh, and I say, oh, he did, that looks as though this board is totally out of the picture. So I was wondering if it had been considered to have a spot in there where the board is advised or not.
Yeah, I, um, Mr. Quinn, right, thanks for that comment. There's obviously times when the board is notified, and I I think, you know, where we see it most frequently is when there's the potential for, I think, an expulsion. I think that's typically the case where an offense rises to that level, where, um, you know, it's, it's been such it's so impactful that the board has to be made aware. But the typical threat assessment, you know, may or may not yield any information that would be relevant for the board. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, I've, I've signed the state report that goes up several times. And I know that, uh, I am not interested in some of the violations, but if there's a threat am not interested in some of the violations, but if there's a threat to welfare, one of my students, or if there is actual fisticuffs, or if there is something of that sort, I feel the board has, granted, again, I say, I don't have to know the name. I need to know that there was a riot outside the cafeteria, three people were hurt, and this team that we set up is reviewing the whole thing behind it, and I will know as time goes on what has happened. So that, to me, if I don't know about that riot in front of the cafeteria, then why am I here? Because one of our responsibilities is the safety of our students and our facilities.
I don't know, Dr. Rusowski, I'm not sure if you want to. Oh, there's a, there is a.
There is a part about, sorry, if I can jump in, so, because I had read it, of course, myself, and going through some of the threats that had happened this year, it does say the Threat Assessment Team shall document, assess, and respond, respond to reports received regarding students whose behavior may indicate a threat to the safety of the student, other students, school employees, school facilities, the community, or others. And I do know that when a threat was assessed, it was sent out directly to the parents. Now, sometimes the parents found out first from the students involved, you know, immediately, but I do know that it did go out then.
That's part of the procedure for the Threat Assessment Team, yes.
Well, it, I mean, I, that's how I.
And it says if it gets to the superintendent, then the superintendent will contact the parents involved, but nowhere there does it ultimately get to the board, other than our having faith and trust and confidence in our superintendent that they're going to report it.
So.
And that's typically what we do.
And so I just want.
You know, I've grown, as I get older, I find I have less faith, trust, and confidence in anybody.
So, Mr. Quinter, I appreciate the thought there and appreciate the sentiment to wanting to know what's, what's happening in the school district. I think, and I agree with you, that there are many instances that need to be communicated to the board. I think to put it in policy makes it very general. So, for example, when you're going through this, and Mrs. Harris, I don't want to put you on the spot and have to give away too much information, but there are some situations that, if it's a fight in front of the cafeteria, sure, you know, there's, there's some things that need to be, need to be communicated, but some of these threat assessments might be of a more personal nature to a student, and might actually be involving something outside the school situation, right? That maybe doesn't need to have, you know, board information on that, so that's, putting it in policy that XYZ must happen.
I noticed there was the portion covering dating problems where, you know, what control do we as a board have over what they do in the backseat of Dad's car? But if it's on the grounds of the school district, if it's at a school-sponsored activity, if it risks any of our facilities, those are three things which we are responsible to the parents, to the taxpayers, and to ourselves, quite frankly.
I agree. So I, I, I'll just chime in here, I do know that in prior months, there had been notices going out through Parent Square of parents that had children attending the various schools, and I do know there was some talk about potentially the board members being alerted to at least, you know, some of those more serious things, either, I know there was the issue with the high school where people were leaving early because of, you know, some threats that were going around, and ambulance was at, was at another school, so things like that, I know were discussed, so I don't know if that's essentially covering what, what you're suggesting, Mr. Quinter, just kind of being on the same level in terms of those notifications that go out.
Yes, and, quite frankly, a person come to me with a smartphone recording of fisticuffs, of one student just being flat beaten by another student. You know, and I, I said, well, who, who knows? Well, I didn't want to go to the board, because they, I'd just either, I'd either get my kid in trouble, or, you know, they wouldn't do anything anyway. I don't want that reputation. If, and if anything, I've done too much, I've got a reputation doing too much, and spending money, but for protection of our students, I will spend money. And I, I just think we have to know about that as a board.
Yeah, I'll just, and I think, you know, again, I, what I've seen, you know, in my years on the board, is that if there's an incident that rises to that level where the community is, becomes aware of a situation that appears to be threatening or disturbing, we'll hear about it, typically from the superintendent.
When Sally comes home with a black eye and swollen lips, then Dad sort of can figure it out, you know.
Yeah, but I don't think we want to know about every incident that occurs, every disciplinary or.
No, I don't want to know about the kid who gets caught skipping school. If that rule had been strictly enforced when I was in high school, I would have been in the office all the time. But the fact, I want to know if a child is injured, if a child runs a potential of being injured, and maybe it's just a line at the superintendent's discretion, any disciplinary action or any incident which involves potential harm to the students should be communicated to the board.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I do think it's a very, kind of a nuanced thing, I mean, it, you know, it, it's, these things are sort of on a continuum of, you know, where do you draw the line and say it's reportable to the board and whether it's not reportable? So, you know, my response is that we typically, that's why we hire a superintendent, is to be that communication link to the board and to, and to provide us that information when, when the superintendent feels that it's important for us to know it. Otherwise, we would be, if we have to hear every incident that occurs in the school, I'm not sure whether we, you know, really appreciate sometimes too much information. But I understand your point. You're saying at the superintendent's discretion. You're, you're looking for some language to at least give the superintendent some discretion to be able.
An indicator that this information be brought, brought to the board, if it can be. I've talked to teachers in the last week, and they're concerned, and they're concerned because they told me what we reported up the line, and nothing ever happens, we don't have any support. I don't want a teacher walking in in any of our schools that is afraid to tell me that something has happened, because they will be hanging, because they take the liability or they're, they assume the liability of reporting an incident, and then all of a sudden, it just sort of drifts away and goes in the, wherever. You know, I, I think we owe our parents, we owe our students, and we owe our faculty our support, and if we don't know about it, then we can't give that support.
Does anybody else have any comments about that concept, that idea that Mr. Quinter's proposed?
I'm a little bit worried because all of us are mandatory reporters, and if a child's in harm's way, we're supposed to report it, otherwise we're liable, so if that's happening, I'm worried about that.
We're reporting it.
Because they should be, yeah.
I think that, I think that our relationship with the administration and the communication that they give us is working. I don't think that having anything in policy that the board has to be directed, I mean, the beginning of this policy states that it is at the superintendent's discretion. I think that we've had good discretion, and if we need, if, if we feel as though there's something going on that, you know, we have a good communication system where we can ask for things to be changed, but I think that, you know, as of right now, I think that, I don't, I don't know that we need to know every single thing that happens if they're being handled appropriately, and when something does need to be brought to our attention, we can, we can certainly approach them about it, and right now, we have an open communication, right? So if a, if a parent or a faculty member does come to us with a concern, we can go to our senior administration and, and have a one, a one-on-one conversation with them about that. So I don't think this is anything that needs to be implemented into policy.
Thanks, Mr. Morgan. Anybody else? Okay. Well, I mean, we're going to probably move forward with this policy, but I think you have the opportunity at the voting meeting to kind of make a recommendation for an amended policy, if you'd like to, you know, come up with that thought at the time.
I'll strictly go with the board, but this was something that bothered me in the last two weeks.
Thanks for bringing it up.
As soon as the word got on the street, all of a sudden, I've got people coming to me with a video of kids being beaten. I don't like that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, we always look at the superintendent as our conduit, you know, for communications, and if I have a concern like that, I, I know I can call the superintendent at a moment's notice and report that information, and that'll get conveyed to the appropriate administrator.
Could you have done that three years ago?
I don't know.
I don't know either.
I don't know, but I think it's an expectation.
It's not three years ago, it's today, and we, but we don't have to worry about what it was like three years ago, we have to worry about what it's like today, and we don't have that situation. That's correct, but we're, you know, the, the, the school board, you know, helps, helps with that communication with the superintendent, and the school board has expectations of the superintendent, and if the superintendent isn't living up to those expectations, that's a conversation that we have to have with the superintendent, but that's a conversation we can have with superintendent in three years as well.
Good enough.
So if there are no other questions about the policies, we'll just, Dr. Herring, that's all we have then for the Policy Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. We'll now move to Public Comment, in which we'll be following Board Policy Number 903 Regarding Public Participation at Board Meetings. First commenter, Mary Beth Gardella.
I'm Mary Beth Gardella. Mary Beth Gardella, 218 Pennsylvania Avenue, and I'm here tonight to ask you, Dr. Herring, to reconsider your appointment of Mr. Morgan and Dr. Hamburger as negotiators for the upcoming contracts. We had a presentation tonight from a Eagle Scout candidate, and part of their oath is to stay morally straight, and the fact that these two didn't recuse themselves because of conflicts of interest speaks volumes to whose side they're really negotiating on. I don't think it's for the taxpayers, and it's not for my senior neighbors who are living on a limited income, it's not for the single mom who's getting crushed under high food prices and gas prices, and it's not for the parents who both work and support their families and still live paycheck to paycheck. I understand that you have slim pickings on who doesn't have a conflict of interest on this board, so an independent firm who has clear objectives, who will negotiate with the taxpayers in mind, would remove any optics of conflict. The other thing is when you went through the budget, and I've asked this before with those budget meetings from a couple of years ago when Dr. Winter was here, I asked him if the, if the school, if the buildings were to capacity, and at that time, he didn't know, he couldn't answer that question, and so I'm asking it again. Are the schools to capacity? And have we ever done an audit on our facilities? We have two elementary buildings that are within a mile of each other, and it just seems like, I don't know if they're full. And so that's what I'm asking, is are they full? And have we ever done an audit on our facilities to see if, do we need it? Do we need two right next to each other? And then also looking at the budget here, you know, we spend $21,000 per kid. We have less than 4,000 kids, $82 million budget, it's just crazy. Private schools don't spend this much money. You can send your, your kid to a private school for under 10. So we really need to look at the budget and find out where we can cut. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gardella. I appreciate your comment. I'm very confident that Mr. Morgan and Dr. Hamburger are both extremely morally straight in their decision-making. I sit with them in those negotiations, and I see that they sit there with everyone in mind. There's no hidden agenda there, in my opinion, but thank you. Can we address the whether the buildings have been audited or not, and how, has that have, has that happened in the past? Is that something that happens?
Last facility study was done in 2018, and that was done by KCBA Architects.
That sounds familiar. Is that something that is recommended?
It's on our website, too. They recommend every four to five years to look at that, but it also comes with a price.
Of course, this does everything, okay. In our professional opinion, do we feel like we're at full capacity? Is that something that we can take on ourselves to evaluate that?
Sure, I mean, we can definitely, you know, and we have, and there are numbers, the board is presented every month with the enrollment numbers for each of the buildings, so you can see, and those are probably part of public record, I believe, they get put up there, if not, we can, we can do that, and you can see the numbers that are in each one, as well as per building and per class size, so you can see what they are. Are they at full capacity? We probably have some wiggle room in some of the buildings, I mean, not coming out part of the seams. Are they at a point that we can combine buildings? No.
Just to add on page 11 of this audit report that we have here, the 2018-19 school year enrollment was 3,895. I don't, it hasn't changed that much. Maybe we're talking less than 100, if anything.
Dr. Herring, the reason we have two elementary schools within a mile of each other is because of a review that the superintendent did at the time, which resulted in this building being closed, because it requires to be usable, it requires several million dollars worth of modifications to be usable as a, as a school again. So this building was closed to students and made into an admin building, and although the Jackson Wall building is the oldest of our buildings, still in use, its condition was such that some engineers who came in at the time recommended we keep it. We needed additional space for, at the time, the state was saying that we were going to grow by several thousand students, and the decision was made to build a Watten, not on the preferred site, but on a site approximately six miles from where we wanted to, because the county, the township got involved. But anyway, by combining those two elementary schools, Watten and Jackson Wall, we saved a little over a million and a half dollars just by that one decision. So, yes, it is looked at by the student, by the administration, and by the board.
Thank you. Next speaker, I'm sorry, next commenter, Fred Whitehawk?
Yeah, I gotta find it. It's too hard to find anything. Fred Whitehawk, West 47th Street here. First of all, I want to thank you for the thank you job you guys have, okay? I really support all you. May not agree with all you, but I support you. One thing I want to bring up about... Mr. Quinter said? Look at Loudoun County, Virginia, about putting that thing up before. I think it's a very, very important thing to do, okay? Because somebody held that thing up, about that transgender individual, won't go beyond that right there. But you know what I'm talking about, we all do. That's why the board needs to know. That one incident. Uh, second thing I want to say, I've only been to two board meetings in my life. The first one was when they had the alerted vote, okay? And back then, board members weren't answering questions, and I thank you for doing that tonight. I've only been in this building three times. One was to have a student-teacher meeting with my son. And that happened 28 years ago, okay? When I went in there, my son had told me that some days, they went right to, right to the studies, the, the subject that they were on, okay? And I noticed this tonight. That flag back there, Fledge of Allegiance should be said for every one of your meetings, okay? They do it at the township meetings, and that's what we are. But his teacher told me back then, "I don't have time to do that. It's 90 seconds long, and you should make that part of your meeting every time." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehawk. I appreciate your comments. Why do we just do it after a voting meeting? Is there a reason for that? It's just the way we've always done it?
Other districts, we did it at both meetings, but usually, you know, you have to do it at a voting meeting, but you, you can do it at a committee halls or whatever.
Well, then, we should look at doing that. I agree with you, sir. Thank you for your comments. Lisa Spees.
My name is Lisa Spees. I'm the Spanish te, one of the Spanish teachers at the high school. Earlier this evening, it was proposed that you vote on a, well, two, um, field trips, a field trip with some students who were planning to visit from Spain, um, if, if you have your graces. Took Washington DC for our students to participate with them, you know, experience that with them. And also, a two-week exchange program in, uh, Spain, which would occur in spring and which will extend. Well, I wanted to make myself available for questions. This was a, uh, an exchange program we had initially set up in 2019, 2020. We had the opportunity to host. Uh, we hosted 22 students and two teachers, um, from Spain in September, and we were supposed to travel in March, and we didn't get the opportunity. So, we have been kind of on hold. We have been in contact with the same school. Um, we have about 15 to 18 students and families that indicated interest in the exchange program. So, I wanted to be here to put myself in front of you. If you had questions concerning the exchange program and how that would work, I know that I will be again in two weeks' time. Thank you very much for everything you've...
Thank you, Mrs. Spees. Ted Gardella.
Ted Gardella, 218 Pennsylvania Avenue. Our community is now subject to a campaign of disinformation designed to make the decisions of the board looked at no matter what. Former board members are now vehicles for a communication strategy that does not allow for dissenting opinions. Controlling the narrative is the order of the day. Tonight's preliminary budget presentation obviously leaves many questions unanswered, some that have been asked for months. What will happen to programs put in place with Esser and other federal funds once the funds are spent? U.S. Ford struggled with providing our first responders with a tax credit, mouthing platitudes about needing to be sure that the budget could afford it. How curious that more programs and external contracts could be added to an already bloated budget necessitating a tax increase. How will the final budget manage the contract increases that the teachers are coming up with? How will it manage the administrative contract increases that are coming as well? An assumption about enrollment was used, and so now we have a tax increase that will further burden the community with no guarantee of improved economic results. The preliminary budget does not indicate any areas of reduction. Instead, our community will be on the hook for more programs as they come by, more external contracts, more staffing to make up for core instructional program that is seriously deficient by any real accountability group. Where is our draft comprehensive plan? How can we accept an increase to the budget with no real plan in place, with strategies that are evidence-based? Math proficiency scores are horrendous, even while implementing award-winning curriculum. The district spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on elementary literacy materials and teacher training, but we consistently need external contracts for tutoring. Instead of making excuses about poor accountability results, such as spending so much money and investing in teacher training on these materials, this board should really begin to question the strategies being implemented, and there are currently no strategies development, under development to remediate the poor results that we have met. This community is left to wonder when the campaign promises of fiscal responsibility will be demonstrated. The community deserves a board that will rein in spending, examine every expenditure with a return on investment philosophy. Finally, again, on contract negotiation. By assigning board members with current spousal relationships with the PSEA to the finance and personnel committees, this board has not demonstrated that it will act in the best interest of the community. Rather, having these compromised board members on these committees shows the community that certain employees come first, a friends and family point of view. And yet, after a board member quit on the community, this board dared to ask candidates for completing the term if they had any present or past affiliations that would constitute a conflict. With the majority of this board compromised by past and present relationships, the most logical force of action would be for all compromised members to recuse themselves from any negotiations and votes, and hire an outside law firm that specializes in collective bargaining, contracts, and education. Only then can the community have the confidence that all cost sectors in the contract will be reviewed and evaluated, instead of just allowing the philosophy of past practice to govern negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gardella. We're going to move the following items forward for our voting agenda. The meeting minutes. Approval of the audit presentation? I'm sorry. Approval of the audit.
Audit report.
Audit report, okay, I can leave it at that. Let's see. Field trips. Are we moving forward the school calendar technically for a vote? How did we leave that? So, we are, we're going to move the calendar forward, okay?
And, actually, it should be acceptance, because we can't, we can't tell the auditor what to do. We can just accept it or deny it.
The audit, acceptance of the audit. Okay, thank you. I'm sure I'll say that wrong later when I get to it. The grant submission, teachers in the park, educational-based services agreement, hostels agreement, dual enrollment agreement, the conference requests, uh, BCTC budget, audit of tax collector, resignations, retirements, appointments, change of staff status, leads of absence, course requests, and the two policies for second reading. I think I got everything there. Okay, are there any board members that would like to be heard at this time?
Question, Dr. Herring. Do we still not have, don't we still have a labor negotiations attorney present at all the negotiations?
Yes.
It's done in the past, I think, and it still is.
Yes, we do.
So, we...
And a mediator.
Worked with his advice and with his, uh, content, and he serves several school districts in that capacity, as far as I remember. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. That concludes our April Committee of a Whole meeting. We'll be back Tuesday, April 19th, 2022, for our voting meeting. I will not be there that evening. Mr. Fidler will be running that meeting. Good evening. Thank you.